Are we about ready?
Yes, Mayor.
Thanks. We'll go up there and get started then. Good evening and welcome to the August 18, 2020 Lawrence City Commission meeting. Tonight, we will start with some comments from Porter O'Neil about the process of our meeting this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. My name's Porter O'Neil, and as Mayor Ananda said, I will be facilitating the Zoom video portion of the meeting tonight. With me here is Sherri Redeman, City Clerk. She will work alongside Mayor Ananda to facilitate the meeting proceedings. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the city's YouTube channel and public access cable channel 25. During the meeting, please mute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon found on the lower left-hand side of the Zoom menu next to the video icon. When you are muted, a red line will appear over the icon. Muting your microphone during the meeting will make it easier for everyone to hear. You'll just have to remember to unmute if and when you want to speak. In some cases, I may mute or unmute people as needed. Each time you speak, please remember to state your name and title for the benefit of those listening remotely. In the menu, you can also turn your camera on or off by clicking the video icon. For the purposes of this meeting, please keep your video on during the meeting. If you're participating by phone, you can click star six to unmute your phone. For those using Zoom, somewhere on your screen, you will see a choice to toggle between speaker and gallery view. Speaker view shows the active speaker. Gallery view tiles all the meeting participants on one page. And now I'll turn the meeting back over to Mayor Ananda.
Mayor Ananda, thank you, Porter. We will go ahead and take roll at this time. Vice Mayor Finkeldein?
Aye.
Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Shipley?
Aye.
We are all present. We will then hear from Sherri Redeman about some information, further information for this meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to provide just a few reminders to ensure that the provisions of the Kansas Open Meetings Act are met. Commissioners, you must state your name and title each time you speak. All motions will need to be stated clearly. After a motion is made and seconded, the mayor will call on commissioners individually to provide their vote. Mayor, you will then need to announce whether the motion carried in the count of the vote. Various members of city staff are present via Zoom, and they must also state their name and title each time they speak. Individuals who signed up in advance to provide public comment remotely will be called upon by name. When you are called on, please unmute your listening device and state your name before speaking. The regular three-minute time limit will apply. The mayor will then call for in-person, excuse me, for in-person public comment for those without access to technology options. Staff present will direct you to the podium to speak. Following social distancing and safety protocols, the regular three-minute time limit will apply.
Mayor Ananda, thank you, Sherri. Item A on our agenda is to approve the agenda. The City Commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. I do need to let folks know that there is an executive session on tonight's agenda. When the motion is made to recess into executive session, the commission will leave this room meeting, this Zoom meeting, and go to a separate Zoom meeting. When the time scheduled for the executive session has elapsed, the commission will return to the Zoom meeting and reconvene the regularly scheduled meeting. Are there any amendments or changes that a member of the commission wishes to make to the agenda?
This is Commissioner O'Neil. I move to approve the agenda.
Second, Commissioner Larson, second.
This is Mayor Ananda. We have a motion from Commissioner Bulley, a second from Commissioner Larson. Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Finkel, or Vice Mayor Finkeldein?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Mayor Ananda, aye. That passes unanimously. We are ready to move forward on the consent agenda. Sorry. All matters listed below on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Consent agenda items are eligible for live public comments. Individuals wishing to provide live public comment must register as outlined at the top of the agenda. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Are there any items that a member of the commission would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Yeah, Commissioner Larson here, I'd like to pull item B five A.
B five A? Are there others?
Commissioner Shipley, Mayor, B five C.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldein. I'd like to pull B seven L.
Anything else, Commissioner, just Mayor Ananda, anything else, commissioners?
I'm double checking that one of them wasn't, though, I'm sorry. Did he say B seven M?
No.
Oh, what did he say?
L.
L, okay. I was also looking at B seven B. And B seven C.
Anything else, commissioners? Okay. We also have a request from the public to pull item B seven H. Are there any members of the public present who would like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
No, Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, women.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it was pulled. You're all set.
Okay. So just to make sure before we make the motion, I have B five A and C, B seven, B, C, H, and L. Is that correct? Everybody hear their motions or their items? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Commissioner Larson, I move to approve the consent agenda with the following exceptions. We will move for further discussion, B five A, B five C, B seven L, B seven B, B seven C, and B seven H.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldein, I second.
This is Mayor Ananda. We have a motion from Commissioner Larson, a second from Vice Mayor Finkeldein. Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldein?
Aye.
Mr. Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Mayor Ananda, aye. Passes unanimously. We'll move on to item B five A.
Yeah, Commissioner Larson here, I pulled this because I would like to hear a little bit more from staff on the contract that was attached to the item on the agenda. Specifically under the Exhibit A terms and conditions, there's some language in here that I'm concerned about, and I would just like to get more information on it. And also to determine if this is something legal has approved or, you know, just have a further discussion on it.
Engineering Program Manager Matt Bond. So I had a discussion with the contractor who's also on the call tonight. And the purpose of number three was the original bid that he has, a contractual agreement with us now, is for basically three to four weeks of work in the, for diving in the river. So the additional change order we have now is probably doubled that amount of time because of this scour that's at the bottom of the front face of the dam. And so that is why the condition that they have there, I think the discussion is that it probably needs some better language on that and won't be accepted as it currently is on number three. So there probably needs to be some give and take as far as what that language would be, but that's where we're at right now.
Okay, Matt, I just might want to explain a little bit more. The two items I'm concerned about, one is number three, which is any delays to our work, which is the contractor, due to forces beyond our control, will be invoiced at a rate of $4,750 per calendar day. And then the second item on there, a problem with is item number five. And it states, "The owner understands and accepts that all proposed work will be conducted in the Kansas River and that the river levels fluctuate and may result in flooding or delay of work. Any lost time to fluctuating water levels will not be considered an act of God and will be invoiced at the daily rate." And if there are re-mobilization rates as identified in number two above. So both of these items basically penalize us under certain circumstances that really are very loosely discussed here, and I don't see any sort of definitions for what does "forces beyond our control" mean? And what does "flooding" mean to them versus what we think it means? And also generally, contracts I've ever been involved with, usually it's the contractor that's penalized for failure to meet certain dates or times or whatever guidelines are in. So this is the first time I've ever seen where they're going to penalize us for forces beyond our control, but they don't, there's no definition for that. So I'm curious as to whether or not legal has reviewed this, and then also I just have a really difficult time with this type of wording.
So I would, just Matt Bond, Engineering Program Manager, I would agree with that assessment, Commissioner Larson. As far as, in the past, with the language that I had read this originally, as we were working in a joint measure to help, we got kind of a big puzzle that we're trying to put together with all of the different aspects we've got of the project. So just a quick recap, we have the slope stabilization project and then also the scour hole repair project. In addition to that, we were trying to limit the amount of time that the Bowersock Power and Mills Company would be out of service with what they have for their power. And so when we were talking about delays, the original intent, the way that I had read this, was that it would be delays from the other contractor that's not part of the contract. So I would agree that that probably needs to be, the way it's written out will not suffice for that. I would say that that needs to be changed, and I could also let Ron Swan, who is with TSP, is also on the call, and I could let him speak to some of those concerns that he had.
Commissioner Larson here, I just want to add on that. The item, item number three there, your concern is that there's going to be another contractor involved with this on the Bowersock Dam side. And so why would we be penalized if the third party, who we're, I don't know if we're in contract with them or not, if they caused the delay?
No, that was the intent that I believed. I'll let Ron speak to the reasons that he had on there.
And then, you know, again, Commissioner Larson, again, that's just, there's nothing written in here that actually explains that.
Right. Matt Bond, Engineering Program Manager. Ron, did you want us to speak to that? You're on mute.
Yes. The original contract for the repair of the scour holes, we estimated at three weeks to possibly four weeks worth of work in the river. The.
Mayor Ananda, I think we lost him, or maybe try unmuting again?
Mayor, I think his video froze.
Yeah, he's, Matt Bond, Engineering Program Manager. Yeah, I would imagine, because he's calling from Michigan, and it's in his dentist's car, so that's probably that. I would say that legal did not review that. That's my fault, so I want to point that out.
Commissioner Larson, I would appreciate it.
Oh, it looks like we lost him totally.
So Commissioner Larson here, I would have a hard time moving forward with this until the language and these terms and conditions are better written and better defined. And I'm very concerned about us taking on the liability for a third party that we may not have a contract with.
This is Commissioner Bulley. Commissioner Larson, would you consider a deferral?
Commissioner Larson, yes.
Melinda Harker, Assistant Director of Municipal Services and Operations, I also wanted to bring a timing issue just to everyone's attention. We have been in discussions with the Finance Director and Emergency Management about applying this change order for reimbursement due to the flooding event last year. So my understanding, and Jeremy would know more about this, but my understanding is the work would need to be complete by the end of the year. And that that's an 85% reimbursement. So one thing I guess I would request is if there is a way to revise the language and not have to defer it till September 1st. Because I do have concerns that we won't be able to get it done, if that's the case.
Commissioner Larson here, then I would prefer to remove items three and five from the terms and conditions. If you want it done tonight.
City Attorney Tony Wheeler. I just want to add that the issues that Commissioner Larson brings forward, I think are significant. And I don't think that we could amend the language here on the spot, Melinda, to meet your deadline. So if it cannot be deferred to September 1, then removal of three and five would be the only way to proceed.
Melinda Harker, Assistant Director of Municipal Services and Operations. I'm curious if we can take action on it with those terms and proceed with that. And then if there is pushback from the contractor or other proposed language, we could present that as a new change order on September 1st. But at least we would have the ability to proceed under this change order if they're willing to accept those terms.
Commissioner Larson here, again, I'm struggling with the fact that legal never even reviewed this document before it was brought before us. And at this point in time, I'd prefer to have those items removed, because when you say pushback, if we move forward with this and talk with the contractor about removing this, we've already approved the languages written, and I can't go forward with that.
Melinda Harker, Assistant Director of Municipal Services and Operations. I agree with removing those two items. And I was making that comment in case the vendor, the contractor was back on the line, that if they had issues with it, they would understand that that's the terms of the approval. And they could present something else for us to bring back to you on September 1st if they won't sign under those conditions. But at least if they're willing to agree to that, we'd be able to move forward, removing those two terms.
Mayor Ananda, Commissioner Larson, do you want to make a motion removing those items?
Perhaps we should have public comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Bulley. We do have one individual signed up for public comment on this item. Chris Childen, please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yeah. Mayor, I don't have any additional comments based on the discussion that has occurred so far, so I'll defer any comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Porter, is there any member of the public there who wishes to get public comment on this item?
No, Mayor.
This is Mayor Ananda. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I will make a motion. Hang on, let me find it again. Okay, I, this is Commissioner Larson, and I make a motion to approve change order number one with TSP Services in the amount of $422,145. And amend the 2020 to 24 CIP for additional repair work to the downstream faces of the Bowersock Dam in association with the Bowersock scour maintenance. With the exception of removing items number three and five from the terms and conditions on Exhibit A.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Bulley, I'll second that.
Mayor Ananda, we have a motion from Commissioner Larson, a second from Commissioner Bulley. Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Bulley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldein?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Mayor Ananda, aye. That passes unanimously. The next item that we have pulled from the consent agenda is item B five C. Who has that item?
I think it was me, Mayor. Sorry, I've got way too many tabs pulled up here. This is the funding, I believe, for the sidewalks or accepting the bid. And I just, I want to say a few things, and I promise it won't take too long, even though it's going to sound like it will. Mayor, when the city first started talking about sidewalks and the new sidewalk policy in March of 2017, the first version of the policy failed at City Commission. The city manager at that time asked them to vote on that policy. They declined. It was denied partly because they were still asking for public input. Also, an equitable funding mechanism was requested by three commissioners. Commissioner Larson even at that time specifically asked for public input, and that the zone, the way we do the zones, was also out of keeping with Transportation 2040. You all will know this, because we just talked about it two months ago. That public input never happened. The next thing that happened was there was a memo in June 2017 where staff stated that the lack of a change to the policy equated to a new policy. So no, again, no public input ever happened, even though it was asked for specifically by commissioners. And in March of 2018, no public input had ever happened, no discussion, no forums, no Lawrence listens, nothing like that. And at that time, the more or less same policy with a few changes came forward. And this time, the commission was told they did not need to vote on it. It was an administrative policy, and they were not required to vote on it. It was just direction. The other thing that's interesting here and why I'm bringing this up is because in our memo, and I believe it was yourself and Commissioner Larson, were concerned that people in those zones don't have access to the funding if you qualify for low, moderate income help. And at that meeting, I personally informed the commission that that was a problem with that. And among all the other things that are in either of the meetings that I just mentioned, the public brought up all kinds of inequities in this policy, some of which have been kind of addressed, but not really. And again, suddenly, the commission, they did not want to vote from the commission on this. Suddenly, it was an administrative policy. The next thing that, you know, a lot of other discussion happened. They funded it. They didn't vote on it, but they funded it. But most recently in September 2019, Chris Flowers actually brought up this exact same question about whether or not people outside the funding area, the zone, would be able to use that funding. And Brandon McGuire again responded, no, those people do not have access to that. So for three years, almost four years now, that has been the case, and it has been stated on more than one occasion in public meetings. So just very important to me to understand, and here's why. This policy, number one, never got the input that commissioners asked for from the public regarding how they would like to see it funded. And this particular inequity that the memo proposes to address, I do kind of have a question for staff. We've never, again, voted on it, so I assume that we're just voting on the funding here and recommending the addition or the changes to the funding for people who might have access to the low-income monies. Would like to have that clarified by staff. And really, Mayor, what I would really like to do, based entirely on our conversation on, what was it, June 9th? There was, as far as I understood, re-washing the meeting, a consensus that we needed to discontinue the zones and look at the data-driven information, which will be complete in about six months, according to staff, which would change from. which will be complete in about six months, according to staff, which would change from, possibly change from zoning to areas that are more highly used. And again, that comports with Transportation 2040. I leafed through it a couple times, and I noticed there's actually direction to do that. For whatever reason, we did not do that. So, I am humbly asking you for that reason, and the at least three other inequities in this policy, that we not move forward with funding Area 2 and save that money for when we get our data-driven information, identify a more appropriate way to address sidewalk maintenance.
This is Mayor Nanda, thank you, Commissioner Shipley. Did you have a question for staff that you wanted to ask?
Yeah, just normally, something like this, we might be asked, sorry, this is Commissioner Shipley, we might be asked to vote on the funding, but they kind of have combined the funding and the direction into one thing, so there's not, I just wanted to make sure that that was separate, there was a vote for the funding or not the funding, and then direction given to staff, if we do or don't want to include people outside the zone to be able to access the low-modern income funding.
This is Jake Baldwin, Senior Project Engineer from MSO, just responding to your question, Commissioner Shipley. Yes, the action is to approve the construction award contract, I believe it was staff's intention in response to commissioner inquiries, to allocate some of that additional funding set aside to sidewalks to assist those people who are out of zone, qualify as low income. And I think it was our intention that if there was some disagreement, we wouldn't proceed with that.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
This is Mayor Nanda, we don't, are there any questions for staff before we get a public comment? Okay, Porter, is there any member of the public who would wish to get a public comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor.
Hello, I haven't done this like this before, I guess it's working okay, this is Bonnie Eufman. I have spoken, expressed my feelings about the sidewalk question on various occasions. Prior to meeting this evening, in the last 24 hours, I reviewed the video of the work session on June 9th or 10th, whichever one that was, and what I heard there is that commissioners agreed that the city should change the way it prioritizes enforcement of the program, that the zone thing was not deemed to be a good thing, and they would rather see the city prioritize enforcement based on other factors, such as the need of repairs and whether the sidewalks are part of a highly-used routes. I heard agreement, consensus among all five, that there should be continuing conversations about prioritization. I also heard that it was agreed that there was need for stakeholder engagement on this question. I'm not aware of there having been since June 10th, any continuing, any conversations about prioritization. I'm not aware that there was any opportunity for stakeholder engagement since that time. Because, to my knowledge, none of these things that were requested have happened, I'm surprised that staff is now requesting funding for Segment 2, which it seemed like all of you as commissioners were saying, that's not a good idea. So I'm just, I'm at a loss to understand what's happening right now. Thank you. Any clarification of that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Porter, is there anyone else present who would like to speak to this issue?
No, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor Nanda, thank you. We will bring it back up to the commission.
Commissioner Larson here, I do recall in our last meeting when we discussed these sidewalks in June, that there was discussion that looking at a different possibility, different way to possibly prioritize where we actually do our sidewalk maintenance program, in what order, but I don't recall saying we should stop this program until that's done. So, you know, I, at this point in time, yeah, we need to look at that, and we need to do that going forward, but at this time, I'm still in favor of going forward with what we have until we can have that discussion and see what staff recommends as far as future work and what order we do it in.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldie, I guess I want to make sure I understand, is all $452,000 in this proposal, all of it in that one section? Is that correct?
This is Senior Project Engineer Jake Baldwin, yes, that is correct.
Okay, so I thought, and of that $452,000, looks like $300,000 is for our city sidewalks and 101,080 ramps, is that? That's correct, right?
That is correct, this is Jake Baldwin, Senior Project Engineer.
And so, those are all?
You introduce yourself again, Vice Mayor.
Oh, sorry, Vice Mayor Finkeldie, thank you. Vice Mayor Finkeldie, so those are sidewalks we've identified that are on our property that need repair?
Senior Project Engineer Jake Baldwin, yes, that is correct.
Okay. And then, do I also underst, Vice Mayor Finkeldie, sorry, Vice Mayor Finkeldie, do I understand also that this bid came in substantially below what we had budgeted for this, so we have, I think I, quite a bit of money left over in our budget, is that correct, from what we have in the 2020 CIP?
Senior Project Engineer Jake Baldwin, yes, that is correct.
Do you know approximately how much that is? Vice Mayor Finkeldie?
Senior Project Engineer Jake Baldwin, I believe our bid is about a third of what funding is available. There is 1.5 million between the city and public sidewalk funds, and then there's additional funding from the ADA ramp improvements project.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldie, when I looked at this initial, you know, saw that the bid came in low, and that we weren't spending our money, my first thought was, we have sidewalks that need repair, we should be using that money, and don't let it be devoted away from sidewalks but to something else. So I guess, question for Commissioner Shipley, are you saying we should not spend any money on sidewalks until we have a different priority plan, or are you okay with spending a third of it on this section of town and saving two-thirds for, you know, for the priority?
I think, I wanted us to have a discussion about it, since we were very clear that we didn't think that the zoning was working, so whatever was what we wanted.
Mayor Nanda, can you introduce yourself, please?
All right, sorry, Commissioner Shipley. Yeah, most of that is slated for what our own sidewalks are, but are those the priorities we would choose had we prioritized them the way Transportation 2040 suggested in the first place? It doesn't mean they won't be done sometime, and also doesn't mean we won't still get a very good bid. I just wanted us to definitely, especially, we spent a lot of time talking about our precious resources and how small they are, was it a good idea to save that money and spend it where we think it's going to do more good?
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldie, I guess, I guess my thought was that we've identified these as deficient, we've sought bids on them, and we got a really good bid, you know, it seems to me to use our resources, we should move, move and go ahead and complete the repairs on sidewalks that we have deemed deficient. I'm certainly, as I said in the last meeting, looking forward to a discussion about where we spend that money in the future, but I guess I agree with Commissioner Lawson in the sense that we've moved ahead this following the project, let's go ahead and fix the sidewalks.
Commissioner Shipley, I want to, maybe staff needs to weigh in here to make sure that I'm clear, in the fiscal impact part of the memo, $50,000 of that is for the public's use, right?
This is Senior Project Engineer Jake Baldwin, yes, that is correct, that $50,000 is to pay for cost share grants, the financial assistance applicants, as well as fronting the cost for those who would be reimbursing the city later.
Commissioner Shipley, Vice Mayor, would you be comfortable spending the money that we've identified on city-owned sidewalks and save the money that we had earmarked for private homeowners and not have them go through this process this year?
Vice Mayor Finkeldie, I need to think about that, I think we've moved along in the process, I think our discussion back in June is we've moved far enough along in the process, you know, that we wanted to look to change in the future, but let's not go backwards here. I think that's what I heard Commissioner Lawson say as well, so I guess I would lean that way, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Shipley, but given all the work we've done to identify, to send the notices, to get where we're at, it would seem like we would go ahead and finish this, but move by the time we get to a next, you know, come up with a new plan before we hit the next segment. But maybe someone on staff could tell me how far we are in the process.
This is Senior Project Engineer Jake Baldwin, so where we're at right now, of course, is we've received bids, so the contractor has a list and maps of the addresses where he's assigned to go, and that's how he's composed his bid, based on all these properties that we've included in that bid. So, to pull those would be to adversely affect his bid, I believe.
Vice Mayor Finkeldie, I have the, I mean, the property owners in that section have been notified too, some of them may have already fixed their sidewalks, some might be making application, that sort of thing, is that correct?
Senior Project Engineer Jake Baldwin, yes, we've had quite a number of performed self-repairs.
Vice Mayor Finkeldie, then I guess Commissioner Shipley, to answer your question, I think we go ahead and finish where we're at at this point, but certainly look forward, you know, to continue the discussion about where we go next, and it does look like we'll have some 2020 CIP money. I guess what I would say is, I know sometimes CIP money, if it gets unspent, kind of just gets lumped in with, you know, use it next year on something. I would like to see this sidewalk money from 2020 somehow be, at least in our minds, if not on paper, know that we have some more sidewalk money to spend in 2021, if that's possible. If we have two-thirds of our 2020 sidewalk budget not being spent, we need not to short-change sidewalks that way, at least that's my opinion.
This is Mayor Nanda, I would tend to agree with Vice Mayor and Commissioner Larson on continuing to move forward on this, particularly noting the city's obligations in here, and wanting to be consistent moving forward with this zone. I think that we have a lot of conversation about sidewalks remaining, I think that we have a lot of public engagement about sidewalks remaining, I think that we can continue the conversation about the city taking them on over time, which I think we began with the report from the city attorneys, but I think that that's a continuing conversation for the commissioners to have as well. I think that, you know, to say this zone isn't a high priority when we've already prioritized them, you know, I live in Pinney, and I feel like it's pretty high priority to me, because I live here, and if someone were to call it not that, sorry, because they didn't want to continue talking about sidewalks there, that would, that would be kind of personal. And I think that, you know, we can't negate the people who do use those sidewalks in that community, just because it isn't a lot of folks who don't necessarily live in that neighborhood, we do want folks to have safe neighborhoods so they can access, and I think that this moves us toward that, even though it's part of a program that we've identified as being problematic in many ways. I think that expanding that funding for folks who aren't within that zone is important, because we know that if you can't afford it when you're in the zone, you probably can't afford it when you're not in the zone, and I think it's really important to provide for those folks. So that's probably where I'm landing on this item.
Commissioner Larson, I would just like to add one, a couple things. Commissioner Shipley, you had talked about removing that sidewalk hazard mitigation for the public monies, which is about $50,000. My concern with doing anything like that is the fact that that monies are dedicated towards those who are low-income, as well as those who have more than one sidewalk on their property, so it's a financial assistance program, what I would call one of our social services to our community, and so I would hate to see that money pooled, because technically, if those sidewalks need to be fixed, they're out of compliance, and that an enforcement could be done on them, which, you know, I hope it wouldn't, but technically it could. So I'd hate to remove any public money from this, from this item for that reason.
Mayor, this is Commissioner Shipley, just one last thing that I want to say, again, the people in Zone 1 and Zone 2 were never asked if there was some other way that this could be done, and then telling them that we'll fund low-income people for something they didn't know about or understand is very difficult for me to swallow. You're not doing them a favor, because you didn't inform them in the first place. So, I appreciate what Commissioner Larson is saying, and I had no illusions about how this conversation was going to go, but I will always, always take the time to point out that this is an inequitable policy, and that just putting money aside for low-income people does not change that. There are other inequities, including people who don't have sidewalks versus people who do have sidewalks, including, I live on Castle, then I got a free sidewalk, these people in Zone 2 get to pay out of pocket. Those are serious inequities, and while I absolutely appreciate Vice Mayor's position, and that is a good deal, I will talk about this every time we have a chance until we fix it.
Mr. Mayor Nanda, is there any other commissioner discussion, or does someone want to make a motion on this item?
This is Commissioner Larson, and I move that we award bid number B2030 to Amino Brothers Company Incorporated and authorize the city manager to execute the construction contract in the amount of $452,275.45 for the 2020 sidewalk improvement program.
Vice Mayor Finkeldie, second.
Mr. Mayor Nanda, we have a motion from Commissioner Larson, a second from Vice Mayor Finkeldie, Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldie?
Aye.
Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Nay.
Mayor Nanda, aye, passes 4 to 1. Our third consent agenda item going in alphabetical order is B7B. Nanda, who has that item?
Commissioner Shipley, it was aye, Mayor, this is a special use permit for temporary shelter use of shipping containers at the shelter. I did watch the planning commission meeting, it was very interesting, I hope other people did too. There was just a couple things I wanted to hear a little bit more about, and I honestly, I thought maybe others would like to say something nice about this, so I'm assuming that's true. One thing that came up, Mayor, in that discussion was about, and this will be easy, was about storm shelters, and I, I think I saw Jeff Crick there, so I'm sure he'll be able to answer this. I recall the answer being that the people that might be in those shipping containers would be able to go into the shelter. So I, I, what I really wanted to make sure of, because I don't remember there being follow-up, is the shelter as safe as the shipping container? So I don't, I don't know if that is a good question for Jeff or someone else.
Mayor, this is Sheri Reedman, City Clerk, and I just want to point out, since this item was pulled, that the commissioners will need to disclose ex parte communications.
This is Mayor Nanda. Thank you, Sheri, to make a note of that. Maybe we should go ahead and do that really quickly before that question gets answered. I have none.
Commissioner Larson, I have no, none either.
Commissioner Bulley, none.
Vice Mayor Finkel, aye. I talked to Anay Cool about this maybe four months ago, when he was in the infancy stage, so certainly nothing different than what's in the packet.
Mayor, Commissioner Shipley, I spoke with Jim Carpenter from the Planning Commission, Karen Willie from the Planning Commission, and Sharon Ashworth from the Planning Commission.
This is Mayor Nanda. Was there any information shared that wasn't included in the packet in those conversations, Commissioner Shipley?
Oh, no. They just, they reiterated, sorry, Commissioner Shipley, they reiterated their feelings about the project.
Mayor Nanda, thank you. And so we had a question for staff. Do we need to refresh that question?
This is Sandy Day with the Planning Office, and Jeff can weigh in if he has more to add. It was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting regarding the storm shelter and that any need for sheltering during severe weather events would occur within the primary building for those residents in these proposed detached dwelling units that would be constructed and placed on site. I don't recall from the original approval that there was any specific safe house kind of construction within that primary building. Anyone needing to take shelter would go to an interior building, a portion of that building. I don't know if Dan Rockhill is on the line, if he has more details about that existing structure that he can speak to, but the original building did not necessarily have a dedicated storm shelter space within it, to my understanding.
Sorry, mayor, I don't see anyone else commenting. I, I don't, I don't see Renee pool either, which is unfortunate. Is, does someone else see her there? Okay, Commissioner Shipley, then there may not be anyone here who can answer my next question. It looked like from all the materials in the discussion from the commission, between the commissioners and the applicants, that the intention was for families to use these containers. And I, I thought that was interesting. I wondered why they wouldn't use single people and have the families inside. Obviously not terribly meaningful to my decision-making. I was just curious, especially now that I know the answer to the storm question. I guess I'll give a second in case someone does know about that.
This is Sandy Day again with the Planning Office, and in terms of the way the shelter building itself is, is set up and structured within the primary building, while there is space for families for the sleeping accommodations, the, the daytime spaces within that building don't give a lot of separation for families, is the way it was described, to staff. And so that these units would provide a little bit more ability for families to stay as a cohesive family unit without being in some of those more public spaces within the primary building, but then also these units would provide spaces for individuals who is a larger part of their population, sleeping in those dormitory-style settings. If, if an individual were to need to be quarantined either for COVID or some other illness, these units would provide that ability for that person to be accommodated and be isolated. They would have restroom, they would have minimum food preparation space within those units. So that was their thinking in terms of how these units would work.
This is Mayor Nanda. I would also add, you know, when a family is in crisis, particularly when there are children involved, being congregated in a single space can add stress, not only for the children, but also for those families, and also the other folks who are staying in that space. So having that separate space, there's a lot of purposes, I think, when you're talking about mitigating the impact of crisis and experiencing houselessness for those folks as well. Obviously, I'm, I'm not shelter staff or working at the shelter, but I do work in the field of crisis, and those, those little things can really add up. So I imagine that went into some of the decision-making around this as well.
Commissioner Shipley, thank you, mayor, for that, and also Sandra for making comments on that too. Mayor, again, Commissioner Shipley, the last thing I'm almost sure would be for Jeff. It was a little bit discussed, but I felt like I didn't get a clear answer from you. So this is a special use permit. What happens when people want to put these shipping containers in other neighborhoods? What is our response? What is our desired guideline? Is there something we can do to accept this, but maybe have a moratorium on them until planning has addressed them in a broader sense?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. The, we're in the community would be the question, excuse me, Commissioner. Residential versus commercial has different aspects of it would come into the codes on those things. It's, it's a little bit of a, of a, kind of a quirk of the way that I think a lot of cities are working these things out there, because typically, when you get one of these, they're going to have to meet the residential and building codes for what they're applicable to. So if it was being used as a business, it would be subject to the international, excuse me, International Building Code, go through commercial designer view if it was being used in a commercial nature. If it's residential, then it would go through the residential code review and go through some other items. So it really depends on what the use and what zoning district it falls, and so it's kind of a very complicated answer to kind of address. There's a lot of these that are very similar to the exterior clouding that look like a shipping container. There's also some that are not clad in that way. They look more like a shed you'd buy at a, at a hardware store, or that you would build yourselves. There's a lot of different ways that they can take root. It just really depends on the zoning district and their ultimate use, on how those would be reviewed and fit within our current codes.
Commissioner Shipley, sorry, mayor, so I, I feel like that's what I heard you say at planning. Do you recommend any additional discussion or discussion from planning or safeguards in the code regarding these at this time?
At this time, I would not. I think that a lot of the aspects would be covered by the building code, and because there's a lot of nuance and detail that would go into it, I don't have a pretty good, or excuse me, I don't have an understanding to be able to give you that, that detailed knowledge about what the end product might eventually look like out there. So at this point, I think the codes that we have do a pretty good job of getting us to a life safety guarantees and those items on those fronts. You know, when you get down to the aesthetics and the placement of them, I think we have a lot of criteria, both in the Community Design Manual and the Land Development Code, that kind of give us some ability to consider them if there is space available, but that it does hinge on some different items, like what is it being used for and what is that ultimate end product. So at this point, I wouldn't recommend any code amendments at the time.
Mayor, this is Commissioner Shipley. Thank you, Jeff, I appreciate it. Mayor, I just have one more question, but I, I kind of want to leave it because I think it's a little bit of a discussion, and it doesn't, I know I'm going to get great answers from this group here, and it doesn't weigh into necessarily into what my vote would be. So I just wanted to see if any other commissioners have any other comments before I ask that question.
This is Mayor Nanda. Go ahead, Commissioner Shipley.
Thank you, mayor. Commissioner Shipley, I've been thinking about this for a couple weeks, and one, and again, I'm devastated that Renee's not here because it seems very unfair to ask this, and I, I have tried to think of a different way to ask it, but, you know, we've, in the past, in the United States, done things for public housing or for houselessness, in all good intentions, and then we look back at them and realize that those things could have done better or maybe weren't the right way. So the question I'm going to ask, and just to be clear, I am looking forward to all the positive answers I'm going to get from this question. I was concerned, these are boxes. Is it okay, however nice and trendy they are, is it okay to put people in boxes?
This is Vice Mayor Finkel, aye. I would say a couple things. First, I, you know, and this relates to what Jeff Crick was saying, and this is just, it's just a, a structure, right? I mean, in Wichita, there was a restaurant that is three or four shipping containers stacked together that make up a restaurant, and they use them as a restaurant. One of my friends here in Lawrence has a daughter who goes to University of Florida, and they stay in an Airbnb, which is in the backyard of someone's house that is a shipping container, and they say it's the best place they've ever stayed, and every time they go, they stay in it. You know, and so I, I mean, I, I think it's, it's, you know, to say, you know, you know, it's a box is an oversimplification of it. And going back to the issue of, you know, putting families there, you know, when I was on the Board of Family Promise, and they helped run the family side of that shelter, there was always discussion of how we, how we can separate different populations for the benefit of the families and, and the other residents as well. And this is a, a great step forward, you know, that I believe will be a great addition to the shelter, allow privacy, in particular for families, allow frankly, a little more, a better place, a more dignified place than what they have now. If you had, maybe have, if you visited the, the shelter as it existed, you know, now, or before COVID, let's say, if the families stayed in basically rooms with no windows, with a door, and that was what the family unit was, was a very small room, these shipping containers actually be bigger than those, they'll have windows, they'll have their own facilities, so in almost any way imaginable, they are better than the locations that the families were staying in before this. And so I, I'm very excited about, about the project, and I think it's going to be a good addition to the shelter, not only for our residents, but for the community as a whole.
This is Mayor Nanda. I think the piece of this that isn't okay is that people are experiencing houselessness, and that they are, are put in a position of having to stay at our shelter, not because our shelter is a horrible place or anything like that, but because we don't have a stable enough situation for those folks to maintain viability in their own home. And that, to me, is the real problem, that, that is the root of, I think, the question that you're asking, Commissioner Shipley. I think that it's really important, though, to ask these questions as we go, go through things. We know what road is paved with good intentions, and, and we know that, that we also, not doing thing, anything is not an option as well. And so how do we conscientiously move forward, ask the right questions, acknowledging that even if we ask the right questions, we might still get it wrong sometimes, and to be willing to be nimble and continue to modify our responses to things as we learn to be better, just like we did with the downtown program. I think that's a really good example recently of how we've done that. So I think that you, you ask a compelling question, and it doesn't have a simple answer because, you know, it's, it's, it's trying to fix the situation with integrity, but the situation lacks integrity as a whole. And so you, you can't, you, you have to hold both of those truths at the same time. For me, that's where that conversation sits. So this, this is a sap, and I'm, I'm very excited about it.
This is Commissioner Larson. I don't think, I don't have too much to add, but I think this is a great opportunity for the Lawrence Community Shelter, and I'm glad that they are, I'm really happy and pleased that, that they're moving forward on, on these, these types of ideas. I think we're going to hopefully see more of them. I know the city has asked for some funding from the CARES program to do possibly a, a small area where we can provide some housing, temporary housing, and I, I just think these are great opportunities, and we need to jump on them when we can.
This is Mayor Nanda. Commissioner Bulley, you're welcome to give comments as well. I realize that we didn't do public comment on this item. Would you like me to do that, Commissioner Bulley?
Please.
This is Mayor Nanda. There was no one signed up for that prior to this dialogue. Is there anyone in the commissioner's board who would like to give public comment on this item?
No, mayor.
This is Mayor Nanda. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Bulley. Thank you, mayor. I appreciate that. I don't really have much to add because my fellow commissioners have done such a good job with the discussion. I appreciate Commissioner Shipley's concerns. I really appreciate the expertise that Vice Mayor Finkel brings to this issue. So thank you to my fellow commissioners. Thank you to the community shelter for, for really working on, on providing, you know, what's needed for our community, and as the mayor said, an issue that lacks integrity. Thank you.
This is Mayor Nanda. I believe that Renee is on the call now. Renee, I don't know if you've been listening in, or if you have any comments for us.
Thank you, guys. I, I was confused. I thought we, you guys passed our, us on the consent agenda with the special use permit. So anyways, I just want to say hi, and thank you so much for the nice comments. I think I missed Commissioner Shipley's questions, so if there's anything that you guys want to know more about with the project, please just reach out to me. I'm happy to discuss. Casey Toomey is super familiar because she's an ex-officio on our board, so she can provide additional info. And we're just so grateful to the Planning Commission for a really interesting, in-depth conversation that we had a couple weeks ago, where we kind of discussed some issues around tiny homes, purpose of the project, precedent that's being set in terms of planning and zoning, and a couple of the planning commissioners just expressed that they were grateful to have that opportunity to have that conversation. So I'm grateful to them for unanimously passing this and putting it before you guys, and I'm certainly excited about, you know, what the future might hold with this type of structure. might hold with this type of structure, a tiny home model for, you know, whether it's addressing homelessness or expanding affordable housing opportunities. I'm super excited and honored to be the, the guinea pig for this. And I'm really grateful to Dan Rockhill at Studio 804 in the University of Kansas for making this major donation of pretty much the entire cost of the structures themselves. So that's just beyond generous, and that is the reason that we're able to pursue this. So I'm really excited about it.
This is Mayor Nada. Thank you, Renee. Courtney, did you want to kind of re-ask any of the questions that you had, or do you feel like we've had sufficient discussion on those?
No, Mayor. I appreciate, this is Commissioner Shipley. I appreciate your indulgence in what I perceived as a philosophical question. We don't often pause to talk to each other about those things or in that way. I greatly appreciate you giving me that opportunity. And I, I also support this. And I feel like it's probably appropriate for us to let Brad make the motion, but I'd be happy to also. Thank you again, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Finkeldie, well, I'll take that cue and say I move to approve the special use permit, SUP 20-158, permitting 12 dwelling units located at 3655 East 25th Street, based upon the findings presented in the staff report, and adopt on first reading ordinance number 9787.
Mr. Larson, second.
This is Mayor Nada. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Finkeldie, a second from Commissioner Larson. Vice Mayor Finkeldie?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Bulley?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Mayor Nada, aye, passes unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item that we have pulled from the consent agenda is B7C. Not sure whose item that was.
Mayor, unfortunately, it's Commissioner Shipley again. This is for another SUP. And hold on, let me look at my gallery of these. So I don't know if I see some of the people from tenants to homeowners. I think this is their, oh, she, my, there it goes. I, this is a, another tiny home. Oh, sorry. I think we need expertise on this one, too. Sorry, Mayor.
This is Mayor Nada. Let's go ahead and disclose our expertise communications. I have none on this item.
This is Commissioner Bulley. I have none.
Commissioner Larson, I have none.
Vice Mayor Finkeldie, I have none.
Commissioner Shipley, I have none either. I just watched the Planning Commission. I don't think that counts. But yeah, Commissioner Shipley again, there were, if I recall correctly, they've already done two of these tiny homes, and they came out great. Probably a lot of us went and visited them. One of the discussions that seems to come up a lot, and, and this is the, the only issue I have, I'm sure this will be another great unit. And it does come up in planning, and I, I know it comes up in the HAB, too, is that so many of these affordable units, not just with this partner, but with other partners in affordable housing, tend to be on the east side of Iowa. I guess that's maybe how a lot of us look at it. I, I did kind of ask staff if there's a map of these units, because I think also sometimes we make generalizations and that there are some units people don't know about, and there are partners people don't know about. So we probably don't have the fullest picture. But I, I do feel like I've heard from other commissioners in the past how important scattering is and getting some more of these affordable units on the west side of town. And so I just wanted to take a moment to, to mention that again. I know there's a number of issues surrounding that, including cost, of course, but again, I, I feel like we always have to keep this in our conversations so that we're aware of what the issues are.
This is Mayor Nada. I think that, Commissioner Shipley, I appreciate the, the items that you bring up. And I think that there are instances in which they can be commission items, because they do kind of our springboards from individual items on our agenda. I don't have a point in mentioning that, but I think that that could be part of this conversation unless you see that as something. Is this a factor for you, I guess, in, in your decision on this item?
Commissioner Shipley, no. In my stronger moments, especially, you know, when I heard neighborhood, individuals from the neighborhoods speaking in the planning meeting, in my, in my strongest feelings, you know, something I wondered as well, if we feel as strongly as we say we do about scattering, could we have a moratorium on these kinds of units in the east side until we see more on the west side? I fully understand that this probably would not be the right place to bring that up. But again, whenever something comes up and it's part of the dialogue that we're, you know, we're all supposed to talk to each other, I just want to bring these issues up. The neighborhoods do feel, east side neighborhoods, Brook Creek, East Lawrence, North Lawrence, they seem to routinely feel that they're targeted for a number of reasons. And I just want to make sure that we don't always do things and pat ourselves on the back and then not realize there's still a lot more work to do.
This is Mayor Nada. Do folks have any questions for staff before we get a public comment on this item? Or philosophical questions for each other? Okay. Porter, is there anybody present who would like to give public comment on this item?
Yes, I would.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Hi, Phil Collison, and I'm an east side resident, not in the Brook Creek.
Um, I will, I just wanted to point out that in public comment, I mean, in the submitted written public comment, there is a graph, a chart of where the tenants to homeowners houses are distributed. And it shows 41 in Brook Creek, 10 in East Lawrence, 26 in Prairie Park, it's like 10 in Pinckney, nine in North Lawrence. And so we do have a sense that these things tend to happen more on the east side and particularly in Brook Creek. And I am all for getting these spread out all over the city. And I know tenants to homeowners has good intentions of doing that, but it hasn't happened yet. And that is a sticking point. And so it would be good to get them spread out throughout the city. Thank you.
Mayor Nada, thank you. Any other public comment, Porter?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Sherry, how does this work with online public comment? I didn't have anybody signed up for this item, but I'm getting an indication that there is someone who would like to make public comment via Zoom.
Mayor, that Sherry Redeman, City Clerk, we have not been allowing individuals to provide public comment unless they had signed up in advance. But perhaps it's a situation where a planner or someone had provided the Zoom link and that connection just didn't get to me. I don't know who it is that you're talking about. But in general, we don't do that because it's too difficult for us to see someone raising their hand virtually. And we want to be fair to everyone who, who calls and asks that question.
This is Mayor Nada. I know that we have the provisions for the 24-hour notice in order to give public comment on an item unless they are present within the commission room. I'm hopeful that we can continue to evolve those as we move forward. But I do think it's important to be consistent for folks within a meeting where we have established that. So I will, I will go ahead and hold up public comment and certainly encourage folks to write in information before the meetings as well, if, if they aren't, or email commissioners if they aren't able to get their public comment in. And I'm sorry for that. I think it's also important to be, to be consistent and maintain consistency, which I think is something that has been a struggle via Zoom. So we will go ahead and bring it back up to the commission. Is there any other discussion? Is this, Commissioner Shipley, is this something that you would like to request that we have a future conversation about specifically? Or would you just like to move forward with voting on this item?
Commissioner Shipley, yeah, of course, we can move forward with voting on this item. HAB, of course, meets regularly. We get their minutes. Sometimes I'm, a few times in meetings, I've gotten the impression they don't always have the direction from us on some items. I, so, and, and I will readily admit that other commissioners, Commissioner Bulley, absolutely more of an expert in this area than I. So I, I guess, I would be open to having discussions with other commissioners about how, what we can, what can we do to send a, a message that we're very serious about seeing more of these units on the other side of town.
This is Commissioner Bulley. I'd like to thank Commissioner Shipley for reminding us that our stated goals are permanent dispersed affordable housing. And I would also suggest that perhaps this is something we could talk about when we have a joint meeting with the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. I believe that's next month. Is it? Okay. So I think that what you're talking about, Commissioner Shipley, is very significant for our community. We want to have dispersed. We want to have permanent. And, and those really go to the core of what we're trying to accomplish with the sales tax revenues that we're, we're going to be utilizing. So with that, I support this project, but I think that conversation is important. So thank you.
Commissioner Larson, yeah, I would echo that, too. It's definitely an important conversation and one we've been having for three or four years now. But, but the ability to actually do something about that, I think, is, is a little bit more, more difficult. So having further discussions is definitely important for us to, to try to figure out ways that we can do that. And it seems to me that some of the issues with building out west is the price of land. In order to do that, whether or not it can be at least profitable for a developer to come in and build on, on land that is costs quite a bit more than some of the, on the east, east side of town, unfortunately. It's just, that's just a fact. So it may be an issue where we, within that discussion is have to figure out a way to provide some level of assistance in order to, to get the properties at where we can do that.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldie. I certainly think it's an important conversation to have. As I recall, the discussion at the time, you know, this, we amended the code to allow this. Tenants to homeowners had a couple plans. One, they had a couple lots that they were ready to do this with. And I think even these lots that we have now have been in the works for a while, because acquiring land is the most difficult thing. And tenants to homeowners, when they bought these particular plots, you know, you know, they had talked about doing this. But the second part of that discussion was this amendment that allows these two affordable units is what they believe is going to make, or make it more likely that they can find a lot on the, on the west side of town that they can buy and then put two houses on and make it affordable. And so lastly, I would say, my understanding from the Planning Commission, what I saw was that Rebecca Buford from Tenants to Homeowners said, you know, said indeed on, in that meeting that she intended, and their plans are to move forward with property to the west. And so I, I think we're getting there. I think we're heading there. I think Tenants to Homeowners is committed as well. It's certainly something we can continue to talk about. But I think these have been in the works for a while, and, and I think they're set up to, to be, to increase our affordable housing stock. And I think it's something we should approve today and continue to talk in the future. But I think we're, we're well on our way. I think they've got that direction, and they're heading that direction.
This is Mayor Nada. Perhaps would it be helpful if, I'm not sure who's hosting the joint meeting that Commissioner Bulley mentioned, but if we request that that be added as an agenda item to that meeting?
This is Diane Sodder, Assistant City Manager. I see that Affordable Housing Advisory Board Chair Ron Gage just gave that the thumbs up. I know that the board is planning a, a discussion, a formal discussion with the commission on a variety of topics. And I know the board will be very open to getting your thoughts as commissioners on this important topic.
This is Mayor Nada. Are any commissioners opposed to that? Do we want to make a comment on this item?
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldie. I would move, let's see, make sure I get the right one. Move to approve the special use permit, SUP 20-164, to allow a second detached dwelling on one lot in RS5 District at 1445 Prairie Avenue, based upon the findings presented in the staff report. Adopt on first reading ordinance number 9789, and authorize the city manager to sign the affordable housing agreements for 1443 and 1445 Prairie Avenue.
Commissioner Larson, second.
Mayor Nada, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Finkeldie, a second from Commissioner Larson. Vice Mayor Finkeldie?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Bulley?
Aye.
Mr. Shipley? Whoa, we didn't catch that. Sorry, you muted too quickly. You're so bad.
Commissioner Shipley, aye.
This is Mayor Nada. Aye, passes unanimously. Our next item is B7H, and that was pulled by, did a commissioner pull this item as well? Okay. This was pulled by a member of the public. That was Stephen Watts. Please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Aye. The provision of food for people in our community is a critical aspect of government and service. And we're going to see a lot more of that, given the COVID situation. In the process of doing that, we need to get accountability from operations like Just Food, who is becoming the singular provider in our town anymore. They don't provide information in terms of where their money goes, how much money they make. No, there's no administrative provide despite being asked repeatedly. Easy money is available coming to the government and asking for it. I'm all forgiving it. However, inside Just Food, as an example, Dylan's has a program where you get your discounts using your little SPAR card. And after they calculate how much money you've spent, you get to determine where it goes. They give a little nickel and dime mill level to not-for-profit operations. Most of them in Lawrence are listed with operations like Dylan's. Just Food isn't there. I've asked them to do this several years ago. They don't have the time to do it, but they can come and ask for this money from the town. It's peculiar. I don't know why they're not doing this. Come back. And we're going to need to work with these groups more and more closely as this problem develops, the COVID problem. It's not going to go away. So I hope that you can get accountability from these operations and let's see what they're doing with their administrative costs. How do we determine the buck? How much of the $100,000 goes for food as opposed goes to administrative costs? I don't know. They may have very low administrative costs, but you can't figure it out until you have the information. So I hope that we can get that information. And let's get the food out to people. Thank you.
This is Mayor Nada. Thank you. So we will bring this back. I guess, Porter, is there anybody else there who would like to make public comment on this item?
No, Mayor.
Mayor Nada, thank you, Porter. We can bring this back up to the commission. We can discuss it further, or we can go ahead and make a motion.
This is Commissioner Larson, and I would like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a cost sharing agreement with Douglas County to provide financial assistance to Just Food in response to increased need due to COVID-19. agreement with Douglas County to provide financial assistance to Just Food in response to increased need due to COVID-19 and authorize the city manager to enter into agreement with Just Food to provide assistance in the amount not to exceed $100,000.
Vice Mayor Finkelde, I second.
Mayor Nanda, we have a motion from Commissioner Larson, a second from Vice Mayor Finkelde, Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkelde.
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley.
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, aye, passes unanimously. The last item that we pulled from the consent agenda is B7L. I don't have this one.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Finkelde, maybe this is one I, I should have put on commissioner items because I'm not so opposed, I'm not opposed to what's being, the action being asked to be taken, but I'm curious about how it, we, we take this action and the discussion we had last week about when do we start enforcing again? And I was just curious, you know, when this would go into effect? And if we continue to track our numbers and whether or not the, the staff has any additional indication of when we might start enforcing again, or if they think we're at that point.
This, this is Brad Harold, parking, parking supervisor. So this recommendation really has no correlation with the reinstatement of parking enforcement. This is just one of the recommendations to support the long-term parking needs in our downtown, primarily residents and employees, as part of our 10-year parking operations and development plan. I do have some updated numbers, I'd be happy to share for, for the commission if, if everyone is interested.
Mayor, this is Commissioner Shipley. I was downtown this afternoon and I'd be interested in those updated numbers.
This, this is Brad Harold, parking supervisor. So to give everyone kind of a refresher, refresher of where we were on August 4th commission meeting, we were at 51% occupied en masse, 47% in the parking lots, and 25% in the garages. In the last two weeks, so to be the August 3rd to the August 14th, we've seen a, an increased percentage of 5% en masse, 3% in the parking lots, and 1% in our parking garages. So, you know, I, I know right now with, you know, the University of Kansas beginning classes on August 24th, you know, staff has kind of been targeting that approximate 8% to 10% decrease of what our normal occupancy surveys, you know, occupancy is. You know, I, I think if we have a similar increase in the next two weeks to what we had the last two weeks, I believe we'd be getting, you know, to that time where it'd be beneficial for maybe the commission to consider, you know, a date for reinstatement of parking enforcement.
Vice Mayor Finkelde, I certainly would be interested at least having that on our agenda, at least talking about that on the, on the September 1st meeting. And I do think that these, these changes that you're recommending could make a difference with employees who use the Mass Street parking, or maybe even some residents who use the Mass Street parking, giving them a, an option on the side streets to do 10 hours certainly might open up some, some Mass Street parking. So I do think there's a good change based upon what we were hearing last week. So again, I don't need to belabor this point, but that's, I, I got the information. Thank you, Brad.
You're welcome.
This is Mayor Nanda, would you like to make a motion?
I don't know, Commissioner, this is Vice Mayor, do we have to open it up for public comment?
Yes, thank you. I saw a store, get ready. It's my, it's my trigger now. There was no one signed up to give public comment on this item. Porter, is there anybody present in the commission room who would like to give public comment on this item?
No mayor.
Mayor Nanda, thank you very much. Okay.
Vice Mayor Finkelde, move for approval of recommendations number four and five from the 10-year parking operations and development plan, converting certain on-street two and five-hour parking spaces to 10-hour parking spaces.
This is Commissioner Bowley, second.
Mayor Nanda, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Finkelde, a second from Commissioner Bowley, Vice Mayor Finkelde.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley.
Aye.
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley.
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, aye, passes unanimously. We are now ready to go on to public comment. We have one individual signed up to give public comment tonight. That is Stephen Watts, please go ahead, you have three minutes.
Aye. Waiting on responses from the commission as well as the executive team as to when it'll take place to repair the immigration ordinance 9736 and correct the language that the police have crippled with tricky words. They basically can do whatever they want, and I'm waiting to be noticed at those meetings. Next, we're going to go into, on June 9th, the town commission had a meeting and discussed Black Lives Matter. Ms. Nanda talked about bold moves. Here we are, two months later, and the police still have permission to do chokeholds and neckholds. They can still choke people to death and carotid artery them to death. In fact, it's almost encouraged because it has not been banned. We are using tricky words for Philadelphia lawyers. And it's wrong. I don't understand what the problem is. I have been working with the Citizens Review Board and we're make, they're making a great lot of progress. But they are not analyzing one little policy. That's something that this commission needs to do. I'd like to know when Black Lives Matter to this commission, is it only when it's convenient? Only when the people are looking at you and you can come off with some platitudinous remarks? Because Ms. Nanda, you said eight can't wait? Yep, here we are, waiting. Those two simple things to stop chokeholds. When are we going to do it? Would you Black Lives not really matter in the final analysis? Thank you.
Mayor Nanda, Porter, is there anybody in the commission room who would like to give public comment this evening?
No mayor.
Mayor Nanda, thank you. The regular agenda item that we have is consider adopting on first reading ordinance 9737, which amends sections 2402 and 2403 of Chapter 20 Land Development Code to permit on owner occupied short-term rental units as used by right in all zoning districts, thus eliminating the current requirement of a special use permit and ordinance 9740, which establishes new licensing and procedural guidelines within the Short-Term Residential Rental Property Code.
Commissioner Larson here. Mayor, would you want to take a 10-minute break or a five-minute break, please?
This is Mayor Nanda, yes, let's recess for 10 minutes. Thank you, Commissioner Larson.
If we can start coming back. I'll go ahead and do rule call Vice Mayor Finkeldai.
You.
Mr. Bulley.
Here.
Mr. Larson.
Here.
Mr. Shipley.
Here.
Mayor Nanda, here. We are all here, present and accounted for, and we were getting ready to hear on agenda item number one.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Brian Jimenez, Code Enforcement Manager for the city. You've got me two weeks in a row here. Last week, we talked about long-term rental. Tonight, we're going to talk about the short-term rental ordinance. To give you a brief background to refresh everyone's memory, the original ordinance was adopted on September 18th of 2018, so almost two years ago. It was an effective date of November 1 of 2018, and we began licensing all non, excuse me, all owner-occupied short-term rentals at that time. If you recall, there's still a short, a special use permit provision in the code that we brought to you back in February 18th of this year. And at that time, we all pretty much concluded that that special use permit was problematic for the non-owner occupied. So I'll give you some highlights of the ordinance that we proposed to you back on February 18th. The number one priority was be eliminated a special use permit for non-owner occupied. We require the annual notice to all property owners within 200 feet of the short-term rental upon initial licensing and during any annual renewal. We establish administrative objection that can be filed through the director of our department for which owners can submit a written objection to the license being issued. At your recommendation, we also place a maximum number of free short-term rentals that individual corporation or business entity can operate. And then one thing that we have changed tonight, we removed the definition of owner occupied and non-owner occupied. So in February, we presented to you one streamlined process to license owner occupied and non-owner occupied. And then the last thing that we changed in that ordinance in February was we put a provision in that required all short-term rentals to have their rental license information displayed on the platforms that they advertise on for rental. All of those things I just discussed are still either removed or inserted into the ordinance tonight. At the conclusion of that discussion between the City Commission on the February 18th, we received direction to re-establish a distinct licensing process for owner occupied versus non-owner occupied. That was really important. And there was also discussion among yourselves that there was, there was some thought that to some regard, the non-owner occupied and residential zoning districts could possibly work. And we were asked to bring back something tonight that would put some regulations on non-owner occupied and the non, non-commercial type zoning districts, specifically the RS and RM zoning districts. So but for you tonight, I will talk about the changes to 9737, excuse me, 9740, which is the rental licensing ordinance. And ordinance 9737, which is the amendments to the Development Code, they remain unchanged as you viewed them back in February. So that's the same exact ordinance and content and format as you saw back then. So really, we're only talking about amendments to ordinance 9740. So first and foremost, the most important change is we re-established the definitions of non-owner occupied and owner occupied. That was necessary for us to establish a distinct licensing route for those two occupants. As you recall, our owner occupied follows our long-term process very, basically in the same format. It's a very streamlined process. If you're owner occupied, you apply for the rental license, much like you do long-term. We issued the license and you carry on with, with the course of the required inspection. The non-owner occupied, we've only done two, three of those through the initial special use permit. And since that time in May of 19, basically, we've done a moratorium on non-owner occupied. So we know they're out there, but none of those have been licensed since that time. So a little over a year, we have, have had no direct link of how to license the non-owner occupied rentals throughout the city. So first and foremost, what we did is, based on the direction we received, we did change a couple, add a couple code sections. For, for non-owner occupied in the RS zoning districts throughout the city, we are recommending that they could be allowed, but we are establishing a distance requirement of 500 feet between each unit within a RS zoning district. That, that number was systematically determined mostly by me, but I looked at how could we regulate non-owner occupied and residential? There was some discussion back in February at looking at the total number of rental units or total number of single-family units. That's problematic and that fluctuates at any given time. A, a distance requirement is, is solid. The property doesn't move. It's something that we could easily determine by our mapping system. So as proposed tonight, we are recommending allowing non-owner occupied in single-dwelling districts, but a, a distance requirement of 500 feet between each one. So you couldn't have two on one street. Or you probably most likely couldn't have two in an immediate neighborhood. The second part of that is, we're recommending a maximum of 2% total number of dwelling units located on a premises or lot in RM zoning to be non-owner occupied. For example, if you have a 100-unit apartment complex in RM zoning, you can have a maximum of two units in that, in that complex to be used as a short-term rental unit. Obviously, the number would go up if you had a much larger, larger complex. We also added a, a section and that gave an app, a notice of denial when an application is rejected under those two. So if somebody wanted to license a non-owner occupied in a single family and they did not meet the distance requirement, they do have the ability to appeal that. We would give them a denial and then they would have the right to an appeal. Same going for the multifamily. If they exceeded the 2% total on the property that they manage or own, and then they wanted to do another unit above that 2%, we would give them a denial and they would have the opportunity to make that appeal as well. We also added, any person occupying a rental within 200 feet of a premises or lot has the ability to object in the application. The previous language was just specifically to an owner. So with discussion with the City Attorney's Office, we thought that it shouldn't just apply to an owner that may be affected by a short-term rental in their neighborhood. Anybody that's occupying it, so obviously, non-owner would be a tenant. So a tenant or, or owner of the property could object to that being applied for. In addition, we made a few other changes, not, not many, but about three. We took out the statement that owner or employees have to tell us that they have employees and they have appropriate workman's compensation. I believe Commissioner Larson at the February 18th meeting asked if we require, require that for our long-term applications. And the answer is no. I don't really see any benefit of that. And with discussion with Randy and City Attorney's Office, we thought that was a good omission from this aversion of the ordinance. The second one we added in addition to your comments from February was the current language in the ordinance requires short-term rentals to be inspected annually. As I briefly mentioned last week with you, I thought that was probably not needed. So we took it to a bi-annual inspection. We're finding a lot of those second inspections on the second year are in really good condition. So I personally don't think we need to inspect every single year on those. And then we clarified, clarified, any person agreed by the decision of the director has the right to appeal within 14 days. So that language was a little, not very clear. So we added that language as well. And those were the changes that are before you tonight in ordinance 9740. There are some communications that have been added since this was posted last Thursday. I'm sure you've read those. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Mayor Nanda, thank you. Are there any questions for Brian?
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldai. Brian, I have a couple questions. First, when we say 500 feet, are we measuring from property line or measuring from building? Or how do we measure that?
I believe that to be from property line. It's probably, we'd probably use the same process and Jeff could correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe like when we do required notice for the Development Code, we do property line to property line. So it, it would be the, the edge of the property and northeast, east, west, west and south of that would be 500 feet.
Vice Mayor Finkel, that's what I assumed, but I wanted to be clear. You mentioned that someone could appeal if they were within 500 feet. What would be the basis for that appeal? I, I didn't see any language to allow that. Did I miss that? Or is there some basis for that appeal?
Well, I might have misspoke on that. I might got that mixed up with the denial part of that. I'd have to look at the ordinance real quick. But we definitely need to notify them of a denial. Randy might be able to comment on that.
Mr. Mayor Nanda, Randy, where are you going to comment on that? I don't know if you're muted.
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. Sorry, apologize for that. I must have hit the wrong button. Anyway, the appeal would be to make sure that there was no error committed. To make sure that, you know, if, if it is within 500 feet of another one, then it wouldn't necessarily be allowed to have one unless there was an error shown or an error made in the decision. That would be the basis of the appeal. Wouldn't be just because they were within 500 feet or just because they were in 2% of a, of a, of a, of an apartment complex or something of that nature. There would have to be some type of mistake or error made.
Vice Mayor Finkel, that's what I was thinking. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. If, do we have, Brian, do we have pending applications for these? I mean, I know we had some under the SGP and this would be different. I guess I'm curious about if, if two properties wanted to be non-occupied and were within 500 feet, they both have pending SGP's or they both want to get in under this new thing. How would we choose who gets in first? Or is it first come, first served? Or is there a process there?
I think it's first come, first served. I know other cities do it that way. And some, some cities have a waiting list and it's, that's the way they treat it. You do bring up some good questions though, and I, I think it's important to note that from, from the day we implemented the ordinance back in November 1 of 2018, we've hovered around between 30 and 140 total number of short-term rentals in the city, whether they're owner occupied or not. We think we were pretty close in the bulk part of that. We've done a pretty extensive research, minus hiring a company to do it for us. With the pandemic, we've seen it probably 30% drop in, in those number of units. We did a check last week and we're under 90 units now that are actively listed within the city. Regarding the pendings, we do have numerous pendings. I think we had about 25 or more that were trying to go to the special use permit. We still have those pendings and probably some other pendings that we've discovered that are short-term, but we don't know the status. And we haven't reached out to them because if they're non-owner occupied, we don't have a path of travel at the moment for them to comply. So we do have some pendings out there that we'll have to go through. I think our first step is, is of course, is to amend the ordinance to the way you directed us to. And then once we have that language, we can systematically start going through all of our short-term rentals cases that we have opened up for various reasons. And then we can start determining whether they're owner occupied or non-owner occupied.
Vice Mayor Finkeldai, and maybe this is a question for Randy. I mean, I guess my concern is if, you know, someone filed an SGP application, you know, two years ago and has been waiting, we adopt this resolution and, you know, someone 300 feet away puts in their application, you know, who's first? The guy who's been pending since two years ago under the old rule? Or the person who put in their application under the new ordinance?
Yeah, we would treat the ones that were filed under the SGP as, as being an application here under, and they would have, they would have the first dibs on, on that within the 500 feet. Yes.
Vice Mayor Finkeldai, good. I think that's more fair. So I appreciate that. Another question. If I remember correctly, the $17 fee, that's because that's what we charge the long-term folks?
Brian Jimenez, Code Enforcement Manager in the city. Yes, that is correct. Discussion with Randy as we were drafting the original ordinance, and that's where we landed on because that's, that's what matched the long-term program.
Vice Mayor Finkel, I think that makes sense. We might later talk about if we somehow tie those together so they automatically change at the same time rather than if we change the, the fee, we have to amend to ordinances, but that's just something to think about. But similarly, it would seem like to me our inspections would be the same as well. Did you consider a three, three-year as opposed to a two-year inspection?
I, I think we did. Obviously, I don't think we'd go over three years for any inspection. I think we just landed on two because I thought that was, you know, not too, too much of a change from the annual that we, that we had, we currently have. I can tell you that, I'm not, I can't remember exactly how we landed on the annual inspection, but I, I kind of always thought that it was probably not needed for the short-term program. But yeah, I mean, yeah, we, we could, we could, we could easily do it three-year. I think the thing with short-term rentals was what I'm finding out when I review our, our, you know, our case file and all the pro, all the properties that are active or impending, and all the ones are inactive. We have a ton of properties that have, that I think people have tried it and then have moved on from it. I, I imagine that's probably the case since March when the pandemic struck, you know, as heavy as it did and still is with us today. I think that's why our numbers are much, much lower. So I, I think we were figuring out a two-year program or a two-year inspection cycle would probably get a lot of people before they drop out completely over time. I think if, but it could easily be three years as well.
Vice Mayor Finkeldai, thank you for that. And that actually leads to my last question, which is, is there's, and I'm not sure I saw it, some sort of abandonment of use? I mean, if you have a short-term rental license and then you decide to rent it long-term, you know, how do we know that? I guess we, we know it at the annual, I guess we know it at the annual review. Is it automatically abandoned?
Brian Jimenez, Code Enforcement Manager. Good question. We deal with that routinely. I just had a person in fact call me this week. And he's registered as a long-term rental with us right now. And he wanted to know what he would need to do to do the short-term part of that. It's, it's relatively painless. We make, we make that switch over and we close, we actually close out the long-term license. We inactivate it. And then we open up a brand-new short-term rental license for that person. Now, depending if they just paid their long-term license, you know, within the last month and they're opening up a new short-term license, you know, we, we could possibly look at, you know, applying that fee straight over and not making them pay again if, if it's relatively within a short period of time.
Vice Mayor Finkel, I thank you. Those are all my questions.
Commissioner Larson here. I have a few questions for you, Brian. Want to start off with, does, would this ordinance supersede any restrictive covenants in neighborhoods?
Brian Jimenez, Code Enforcement Manager. Not sure. I, I mean, I understand your question. Can you give me an example of what you might be thinking of?
Yeah, if a neighborhood association or neighborhood has said, that has an actual covenant that says Airbnb's or short-term rentals are not allowed.
Okay. Yeah, I understand. The way I understand restrictive covenants, and Randy can weigh in on this, is they can be more restrictive than city code. They just can't be less restrictive. So a restricted covenant, in my opinion, would overrule the ordinance. They, the homeowner of that property with that covenant would, would have to comply with their restricted covenant, or there could be a civil action taken by the HOA or someone within that, that neighborhood against that property owner for violating that restrictive covenant.
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. That's correct. I mean, it would not have any effect on the city law. City would be able to continue to do this, but it may have a civil impact between the homeowners association or the covenant thing. And the property owner, if a property owner chose to violate the covenant. So the property owner would be basically governed by the covenant. The city would not be.
Thank you. Commissioner Larson, I have a few more questions for you. Start, you said with anybody within 200 feet of that property would have the ability to, to appeal or to petition not having that in the neighborhood. Why 200 feet? Why not 400 feet or 500 feet?
Good question, Commissioner Larson. Brian Jimenez, Code Enforcement Manager. I think we landed on, on that. Probably most likely because 200 feet, we thought that was a good distance where if there was a negative impact, a neighbor within that distance would be able to fill that most likely. 400 feet could, could be, you know, a couple streets over. And I think maybe our thought was if you opened it up to a much larger perimeter, then you might be getting people that might be objecting to that, that may not have any negative impact whatsoever. And, and then you might just be having some false objections possibly, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Yeah. My next question is, so what reasons can a person be denied? Sorry, Commissioner Larson. What reasons can a person be denied in an SRT permit, license?
Brian Jimenez, Code Enforcement Manager. I think I might defer this to Randy, but I think our discussion, we, we covered that a little bit at our February 18th meeting about the, the process. And I, the way I remember it was just because you object, that doesn't mean the person would be denied. You, the person objecting would have to bring some clear and convincing evidence to the director. It might be the number of noise complaints that have originated with, with police evidence to support that. Or something that is concrete and just not of the opinion that I simply don't want it, want it there because I don't like it. And then that, that information is, is, now it would be Jeff, of course. That information would be reviewed by Jeff and then Jeff would be making that. That information would be reviewed by Jeff and then Jeff would be making that decision, which could be, um, could be challenged as well.
So Commissioner Larson, so the way I understand it then, there's no way a neighborhood could keep out a, a short-term rental before they even come into the neighborhood?
Well, the way, the way the, um, objection is worded, I mean, during that process of initial licensing, a rental, a short-term rental, the first time it was, it was brand-new in the neighborhood. They would have to give that notification that's within the ordinance and, and use that language or very similar language that's in that ordinance. And they would have to notify everyone within two hundred feet that they are applying for a license. And then those eject, objections could come from those people, any owner or tenant within those two hundred feet. It's also, um, and it's also worded where at the time of renewal, you're doing the same notification process. So basically you're notifying everyone within two hundred feet as it's written right now that you're either licensing initially or you're renewing your license annually. So the same opportunity there, the opportunity is there every year. And of course, I think it's important to note too, um, you, you know, someone can make a complaint at any time during the year to our department or to the police department that can be passed on to us. So it, it just doesn't have to happen at the time of initial licensing. Well, or, or most likely during the renewal process, you know, the year between initial to renewal. At any time, we could take a complaint. And I think it's important to note, I mean, almost two years, we've had one complaint on a short-term rental. And it was, um, I think it was, um, I can't remember the exact location, um, but it, it had to do with noise.
Commissioner Larson here, yeah, I appreciate that, Brian. But again, it goes back to, um, the likelihood of somebody being able to keep them out of their neighborhood um, from the get-go before they even get in there is, from what I understand what you're saying is, is not possible. Cause it sounds to me like they have to have a track, track record of, 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 um, wrongdoing, so to speak. And, and just to speak a little bit about, you know, it's, it's good to hear that you're not, you're only gotten one complaint, but I can tell you I've gotten several phone calls and what I hear from folks is they're afraid to, to talk to the city because they don't know what sort of retaliation from their neighbors they would get.
Commissioner, this is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. Uh, there is a possibility at the time of application, then their notice is given out and if there's an objection filed and if the people who file the objection can establish by preponderance of the evidence that, that the use as a short-term rental is going to cause a safety hazard for the neighborhood or would cause substantial interference with the enjoyment of property, perhaps maybe because of the, the proximity of the houses or something of that nature. There, there could very, very, very well be a reason why one of these would be denied before it even came into the neighborhood.
So Commissioner Larson, so if they, um, they ask for a denial and, um, staff says, no, we're going to go ahead and let this one be licensed, um, do they have the right to appeal it up to the city commission?
They would have the right to appeal, but it would go to the building code board of appeals. And then that would be a final decision of the city and it, they would, could go to district court.
Okay, all right, thank you. So.
Services Director, just wanted to share the two hundred-foot notice mimics the protesting petition under state law. Just wanted to share that, where that number came from.
Thank you. Commissioner Larson, thank you, Jeff. Appreciate that. So Brian, um, based on your measurements of five hundred foot rate, five hundred, um, foot between, um, as, as short-term rentals, how many would you project that we could potentially have in residential neighborhoods if, given those, um, measurements?
Well, I haven't done that citywide projections. What I did do is look at some neighborhoods that were individualized, like, you know, they were, they were separated by streets or a school or something like that. And what I can tell you is if you, if you pick a property and you do a five hundred-foot radius around, you got to remember that goes every which way. So it does start reducing the ability to put, um, any, any significant number of short-term rent, non-owner occupied and residential. Um, you could, you know, that's just a number that we fell on. We could, we could increase it if you like. We could go a thousand feet and, and go that route if, if need be. Um, I just, we just thought that picking a distance requirement would be something that we could always measure without any difficulty versus trying to get a percentage of units that are available for rent or the, the number of units are, are in a single-family zone district. Um, so that, that was a, that was a starting number for you, for you all to consider. And if you wish to increase that, um, obviously we'll, we will, we would do that.
Thank you, Brian. So Commissioner Larson, I have a, just a few more questions for you. So how will this distance be enforced? What sort of tools?
Um, Brian Humanist Code Enforcement Manager, much like we do notifications, um, when we do a, a mailing out of four hundred feet or a, a notification of a, um, site plan that's pending for development of a vacant tract land. We use the same measurements, um, skills that we have available to us there. Um, as you know, we have the long-term rental map. Um, we can do the short-term rental map much like that and we can sit, we, we can, we can take measurements off. Um, you know, it'll be much easier to do because we're looking at a certain zoning district and we don't have that many licenses at all right now. So it, it should be a hard task to keep track of. The first thing we do is when we got a non-owner occupied rental license application in, um, for us to review, um, we would go straight to that address on our mapping system and we would see if there's any, um, other non-owner occupied with, within a certain amount of distance. If it was obvious it was going to be close, obviously we're going to start doing the measurements.
So I, I guess I didn't ask that very well. How will it be enforced in the sense that if you find one that's within, where there are two of them within five hundred feet? Um, how do you send a letter to one of them saying you can't, um, no longer, uh, use the, the house for this purpose? And does it go through a whole process where you write several letters before they have to do anything or can they appeal it?
Okay, Brian Humanist Code Enforcement Manager, um, the way I see it, there's probably two, two scenarios where that would come to play. One is when we get the application of, 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 of a property that's trying to get licensed as a non-owner occupied. Then we would send that denial notice telling them why. And then we, we would, you know, within that, you know, I don't have that letter completed yet, but I, there'd be some language in there that would say you're denied because you violate this code section of, of the code. And therefore your use, if you're using the property in that capacity now, you must cease and desist immediately. That's the one instance where we get the application in. The second one is where we find it on our own or they're operating in violation, then we, we would skip the denial letter because they haven't submitted an application. And then we would send another, uh, we would send a different type of letter that basically says, um, you know, your property is being used in the, in the capacity of a short-term non-owner occupied rental and, uh, single dwelling district. Um, your code says this, therefore you can't apply for, oh, I guess you could apply for a license and challenge this on an error. And then, so we could do it two different ways.
Okay, that sounds good. Um. So, see, I had a, Commissioner Larson, I'm sorry, I had another question. So how does this address some of the, or does it, maybe it does, um, address some of the issues regarding um, the, the competition between hotels and the short-term rentals where this is essentially for non-owner occupied only, I'm talking about, where this is essentially a, a commercial endeavor. I mean, because I don't see anything where they're going to be required to follow ADA, have the fire protection that, uh, hotels are required or pay the taxes that hotels are required. This is not addressed in here at all. So it sounds to me like we were, we're basically setting up a playing field that is not level um, for, for businesses because it essentially is a business.
Uh, Brian Humanist Code Enforcement Manager, regarding, um, um, there, regarding, um, fire safety, we obviously take that very seriously. Um, I can tell you from a fire safety standpoint, whether it's a sealed detached home or an apartment building, um, this, basically the same fire code standards apply for the most part, except for we're not, not requiring hard-wired smoke detection throughout a residence that, that was required at the time of construction after nineteen ninety-seven. Um, but that's no different than our long-term program. Um, so, you know, we, we would still be inspecting, um, the short-term rental under, under the provisions of the property maintenance code, much like the long-term. Um, and I can't remember what your second question was, Commissioner Larson?
It was regarding ADA access, uh, you know, as, as a commercial business, you're required to provide a level of ADA access from what I understand.
Right, okay. So I, uh, here's, here's my spiel on ADA and it gets a little complicated. So very good questions from Commissioner Bulley, um, initiated last week on ADA. Um, ADA gets very complex very quick. Um, uh, ADA, the ADA Act of American Disabilities Act was, um, came effective in nineteen ninety, so they're celebrating their thirty-year anniversary this year. Obviously, the sharing economy and short-term rentals were nowhere near anyone's thoughts when the ADA was enacted thirty years ago. Um, what I did was I have a very good friend and a good co, a good working relationship friend with Ray Petty. Um, he happens to live here in Lawrence, which is very fortunate for us because he's a really good resource. Um, he works for the Great Plains ADA Center that's based out of Columbia, Missouri and, and basically serves the four-state region in the Midwest. I also got, um, together with Evan Parenta, our ADA compliance ma, manager. Um, we had a Zoom meeting and some good discussion. So here's how it breaks down. Um, regarding ADA, all three of us do not believe it's the city's responsibility um, to, to, um, dive too deep in that. Most cities do not. Um, with that being said, we all three believe we can do some education, um, through the licensing standpoint. Um, handing out a fact sheet with the application, um, putting it on our website, et cetera, um, to educate people. Ray, Ray is under the belief, um, and with that being said, he would still like to take that conversation to additional people throughout the country. He's under the belief, um, that non-owner occupied short-term rentals um, fall under Title III of ADA scoping requirements. Um, so they would need to um, basically look for readily achievable barrier removal that's without much difficulty in cost. That is about as specific as that code language gets. ADA has a lot of generic terms. And then they have a lot of specific measurements. So there's a lot of ambiguity in that, in that statement. But that's the way the ADA language reads regarding that. Um. There's been a lot of efforts on the social platforms for ADA. Um, Airbnb in two thousand sixteen initiated a anti-discrimination campaign. Um, they just recently, Project Lighthouse this summer, I believe. They, they've amped it up a little bit and I think they're taking all kinds of database points and they're, they're tracking to see what type of discrimination is occurring because any discrimination is obviously unwanted and, and should not happen anywhere. Um, so ADA would be part of our education process to those non-owner occupied. But, um, based on our discussion, my discussion with Ray and Evan, we all believe that, um, we wouldn't dive deep into during an inspection process, start determining what was a readily achievable barrier removal. Um, that, that's, that's probably out the, outside of the scope of, of what the city would want to do.
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. There, there is provision that they can't discriminate against anybody on the basis of a disability. And so if their, if their premises did not comply with the ADA and we received a complaint, we could revoke their permit.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Larson, I, I think I have a few, oh, yeah, actually if, I do have another one here. If they apply and they're denied a, a license, can they reapply later or do they have to wait or how does that work?
Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney, they, they could reapply. Perhaps maybe they corrected the deficiency or the person who was within five hundred feet of them abandoned the use and abandoned their license and so the circumstances might change. They would still be able, they, they could file another application.
Okay. Commissioner Larson, thank you. That's all I have for right now. Thank you.
And Brian Humanist Code Enforcement Manager, I just want to clarify with what Randy said. Yeah, I, my comments weren't meant to say that we wouldn't listen to the ADA complaint. It was more that we wouldn't be going in trying to find issues that someone may file a complaint with us for. But we, yeah, once we got that type of complaint, we would take action as, as normally we would do. Uh, we do some ADA compliance regulations right now in businesses, um, regarding, um, readily achievable barrier removal. For example, if a business, um, was constructed prior to nineteen ninety and their bathroom is nowhere near ADA compliant, um, we get a complaint, we, we, we do act. Um. Some of the, some of the things that can be done without much cost is grab bars, um, that type of thing. Um, door whiffs may possibly sink, uh, front entry, uh, to sink, s- stuff like that, which is, was very doable from a cost perspective.
Commissioner Larson, thank you very much, Brian and Randy.
This is Commissioner Bulley. Um, Brian, uh, are there any hotels in Lawrence that do not have sprinkler systems for their fire safety?
Um, Brian Humanist Code Enforcement Manager, um, I don't have the building code, um, in front of me, um, so I don't know exactly when the sprinkler requirement came in for that type of use group. I would have to do some research. Um. I, I, I doubt there is, um. But with that being said, there might be some older, older motel hotels that may not be sprinkled. Um, but, um, si- since we don't inspect those, I'm not up to speed on what those requirements are. Um, I do know, I, the state of Department of Agriculture, I believe, inspects hotels and motels on, on a annual basis to some degree.
Okay. Um. Does, do our, um, fire med folks do building inspections of commercial properties like hotels?
Um, I, I don't think they do. The way I, the way I understand it is the fire department will go into um, common areas of entries into apartment buildings and they will obviously do the fraternity and sorority inspections. I don't know the full scope of those. I do know they do those. I think they do those on an annual basis. And I think they try to get, um, to many, to as many as possible, um, multifamily-type, um, common areas for places that might need fire alarms or, or, or something like that. They don't go into individual units. I know that for sure.
They do commercial properties though, uh, for example, the First National Bank building downtown?
Yeah, I, I think they, I, I don't know the scope of what, what they do, but I do know they, they, yeah, they do, they do commercials, um, properties.
Okay. And, and I would just submit to you that, you know, to a great extent, staff has viewed this issue through the lens of the long-term resident, the long-term rental program, which is something that we've done for a while. Um, I would submit that that's essentially an inappropriate or, you know, unfortunate comparison, short-term rental, long-term rental. Because the customers are fundamentally different. The people who live in long-term rental properties, that's home. People who live in short-term rental properties, it's not home. That's a very significant distinction that we need to make. And I'm really concerned that when we equate these two programs, because they look so similar from where we are, that we don't take a look at the people who are actually using these properties. Thank you.
Mayor Commissioner Shipley, um, I'm not disagreeing with Commissioner Bulley on any particular point that he may accept, maybe this. Why, um, those, um, commercial properties are more than likely required to be inspected by police or some kind of other, uh, fire company for insurance, not for city purposes. Um, I don't know if Randy or anyone can verify that, but that's my personal experience. Whereas I here or Commissioner Larson has rental properties. Again, I appreciate the argument you just made and I acknowledge it. Um, I don't have to have commercial sprinklers here. Um, I don't have to have a, um, uh, uh, you know, when things catch on fire. I forgot that one. Uh, so I thank you, fire extinguisher. Um, uh, so, uh, I just, I just wanted to point out, I think that might be a little different, although I still appreciate the point you were making.
This is Commissioner Bulley. Um, I've experienced the inspections by our fire med, uh, personnel um, when I was working in the First National Bank building. Um, now.
But again, was that required by their insurance company or the city?
No, this was the city, that our fire folks want to be familiar with the buildings. And they come through and look at, you know, how things are arranged and they, they visit with us about what we need to do. I, I did that when I was at the, uh, Douglas County Community Foundation. I guess it's the US Bank Building. I'm not keeping up. But, uh, ninth and, ninth and mass. Uh, so, yeah, thanks.
Commissioner Larson, I've had the same experience with a rental property where the, the fire department came out and, and just took a tour of the property itself as well as when I had my business, they'd come out every year and do an inspection and it had nothing to do with insurance.
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. I know those fire inspections are done. I know those fire inspections are done based upon the occupancy type. They have R numbers. Typically, a single dwelling, a detached unit doesn't qualify for those types of inspections. So regardless of whether it was used for commercial or whatever purposes, they wouldn't inspect it. But a commercial structure involving a certain size and a certain occupancy, they definitely do inspect.
This is Mayor Nanda. Oh, go ahead.
Brian Jimenez, Co-Force Manager, that, sorry. That is, I confer with what Randy said. A lot of times, the occupancy determines the use category in the fire code. So a congregate residence that has eight to 10 people residing legally in that dwelling unit, if it's a change of use, and it went from a, you know, maybe it was an older house at KU where it was broken up from three apartments, it became one congregate through the approval process through our development code, that would be a change of use that would require a fire sprinkler system, for sure. I did get the fire department's input on the building code questions, and they, so that was a joint response that you saw last Friday through the email. That was with our department and fire department's input. They both viewed it the same way.
This is Mayor Nanda. Are there any other questions before we had a public comment?
Commissioner Larson, I did have one more for Brian. So if we allow these commercial endeavors to be in our neighborhoods, what's to prevent other businesses from opening up in our neighborhoods on property that is non-owner occupied?
Well, I think that, Brian Jimenez, Co-Force Manager, I think, I think the answer lies within our development code land use table. What ordinance 9737 does is permits, is proposed to permit non-owner occupied short-term rentals within all those zoning districts. We have, we have many use categories that are clearly not allowed within residential zoning districts throughout the city. Much like any land use violation, my division handles those. So if it's a, if it's a land use that is not allowed per, per the use table in Article 4 of Chapter 20, then we would take, we would take action. What we're trying, what we're proposing here is, we're saying that the, the non-owner occupied and owner occupied are allowed in all these zoning districts, and we're letting the rental ordinance regulate the non-owner occupied aspect of that. And Jeff, feel free to correct me if I got any of that wrong.
Jeff Crick, Plane Development Services Director, Brian is correct. It's Article 4 of the Land Development Code that allows uses to come in based upon their zoning districts. The only exception that the code notes is a home occupation. There are two types of home occupations in the code, Type A and Type B. Difference between the two, kind of real quickly, is Type A does not have anybody coming to the property, so you could work there and no one would know that there was an operation going, such as a web developer or something of that sort. A Type B would be where you work out of your house, but you leave, and usually customers are very infrequent, deliveries are very limited, and it's just kind of a, excuse me, kind of a slow movement of the item there. But that would be the only exception outside of the Article 4 use table for commercial uses inside of residential zoning districts.
Commissioner Larson, thank you for that description, but essentially, those situations are where the owner occupies the property. That's my understanding. Is that correct?
Jeff Crick, Plane Development Services Director, not necessarily the owner occupies the property, but the tenant or the person living there is operating the business while living in the property. So it could be a renter in some instances.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Larson, I have one more question for Brian. You had indicated at the beginning of your discussion, of this discussion, that there were about 90 short-term rentals listed on the various platforms approximately, and that had been a drop of about a third, I think it was. How many of those 90s or 90 properties are actually in the residential districts only?
Commissioner, Brian Jimenez, Co-Force Manager, Commissioner Larson, I, I think we provided that information in February of 18, and I honestly don't remember. That's one stat I don't have with me tonight. I think, I think it was probably about a 60-40 split with residential versus non-residential, if I remember right. I could get that information, but I don't have that with me tonight. You have to remember, all of our licenses that have been issued right now are for owner occupied. So majority of those are probably going to be in your residential or as zoning districts, because you aren't going to have too many apartment buildings with an owner occupied apartment. You might have a duplex or a triplex. So the vast majority, minus those three non-owner occupied that went through the special use permit process, where I think we approved maybe two and denied one, all those licenses that we have issued right now are all residential, but they're all owner occupied.
Okay.
And then it's also important to remember, the way we define owner occupied and non-owner, when we put it back into the code, was the same way we, it's there today, is basically you have to live in the, in the property free force of the air to be considered owner occupied. So there is a possibility, under the owner occupied definition, that I, I had a short-term rental, say, for example, I could be gone all summer, and I could legally rent that as a owner occupied, because I'm there, I think it's more than 270 days a year as my primary residence.
Jeff Crick, Plane Development Services Director, kind of going back to the comment about the zoning district back, and it approximately works out to be about 90% in residential districts, 10% in another district, give or take a few, depending on the, whose license and what's going on. But it's, overall, it's been roughly about a 90-10 split toward residential that we've seen in the program so far.
Commissioner Larson, thank you very much. That's all I have.
This is Commissioner Bowley. Brian mentioned that there's been a drop-off due to the pandemic in the short-term rentals. Does anyone on staff have any information about how the pandemic has affected our hotel industry?
This is City Manager Craig Owens. I've seen some data, but I cannot, I cannot cite it here tonight. I do know that it's been, it's been very substantial. They have, they have lost a lot of business.
It's my understanding that the drop-off is about 50%. Does that sound in the ballpark of what you've seen in...
This is City Manager Craig Owens. I thought it was higher than that, but I think it's varied over, you know, as the months have gone on.
Brian Jimenez, Co-Force Manager for the city. Commissioner Bowley, that's a great question. I just happen to have some information, I think it's pretty accurate. I just did a webinar this afternoon with a host compliance business that wants us to pay them to help us manage short-term rentals. According to their stats, 60% drop-off in the hotel industry. And surprisingly, they stated about a 40% drop-off in the Airbnb industry. So it's a little reverse there. If you believe what they're presenting, and I don't have any reason not to, it's a 60% reduction, which is substantial.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowley. Thank you for that information.
This is Mayor Nanda. Are there any other questions before we had a public comment? We have one individual signed up for public comment this evening. That's David Barris. Please go ahead. You have three minutes.
David Barris, 912 Holiday Drive, Lawrence. I'm an economist, I'm also a landlord, but I won't be going into this SDR business. I sent you a memo suggesting that the STRs will hurt affordable housing, and you could ask some questions on that, but that's not what I want to talk about. I want to go back to what I talked about in February, which is welfare analysis, which is to say, what's the total amount of human happiness or gross national product, less the total costs that will be caused by short-term rentals. Key point, a short-term rental is a hotel of one unit, and it's unregulated. So to understand short-term rentals, you have to understand hotels and regulation. So why do we regulate hotels? Just because they have lots of externalities. They generate crime, they generate traffic, they generate noise. So we control it with regulations. Now, a one-unit hotel is going to have only one one-hundredth, I suppose, of the externalities of a 100-unit hotel. So you might argue that, well, if you spread them 100 units all over the city, it's not as bad as having one 100-unit hotel. I don't buy that. I think it's probably the same amount of externalities. In fact, it's probably better to put them all in one place because it's easier to control them. Now, owner occupied short-term rental has the advantage if the owner is on premises, but that's pretty highly controlled. So I'm mainly concerned about the other time. So the question is, what is, what is the welfare impact of having short-term rentals replacing hotels? Well, the main thing that happens is you lose the costs to the owner of regulation, and that cost then gets, that saving gets shared between the owner and the new customer. So then there's a benefit to society in that there's a lower cost of housing, but the cost to society is that we've lost the regulation. And we already know that the costs of regulation are less than the cost of externality, because that's why we do it in the first place. So the net result is, we've made society worse off. We've traded a lack of regulation for cheaper housing, but more externalities. We made the world worse, is what I stand on welfare analysis. Not only that, there's a distributional question. Who gains? Well, the people who gain from the transaction are out-of-town guests who come and they get a better deal, and they're the owners, landlords, some of whom live out of town, some live in town.
Thank you, Mr. Burr. Yes, it's a rub.
Okay, I'll quit.
Thank you very much. We'll bring it back to the commission.
This is Commissioner Bowley. I would like to ask...
Excuse me, Mayor, we do have public comments. Sorry, people present to provide...
Mayor, I would like, this is Commissioner Bowley, I'd like to ask Mr. Burr to finish his discussion, who benefits and who is hurt?
This is Mayor Nanda. I'll allow it.
I'm sorry, did you allow it or not?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
In general, the people that are hurt are neighbors who have, on average, average income, as opposed to landlords who, on average, like myself, own a certain amount of capital. So what we do is transferring welfare from an average person in terms of wealth to an above-average person in terms of wealth. That's perverse. We're also transferring welfare from an average person who lives here to someone who doesn't even live here. That's perverse. So the net result is perverse. You shouldn't do it.
This is Commissioner Bowley. Thank you very much.
This is Mayor Nanda. Thank you, Sheri. Porter, if there are folks who would like to get a public comment in the commission room, please go ahead.
What do I do?
Just say your name and then public comment.
Okay. My name is Sheri Ellen Becker. I live at 1017 Holiday Drive. Before I do anything, I want to say thank you very much for all of the long hours and hard work you've done protecting our community from, in the pandemic, and helping work through the social unrest after the murder of George Floyd. In regard to the short-term rentals, I have three points I want to make. First of all, I believe that most of these non-owner occupied short-term residential houses would return to housing stock if they were not allowed to be little hotels. Second of all, this is a highly inequitable situation. And third, you can't rely on the community to do the policing of the enforcing of the occupancy limits and such. Number one, the return to stock. All of these houses started out five, 10 years ago as places where families lived, and they would return to that if this was not allowed. A case in point would be that little house on Barker, which is the one that started us all in the newspaper, where the lady said she could earn double by having it as a hotel instead of leasing it to a family. Well, since July, the same boat, black truck, red car, has been there parked in the driveway, and those people get mail out of the mailbox. I've seen it when I leave work at night. So it has become a long-term rental, because right now, during the pandemic, the economy won't let it rent out that much. The same thing at the house at 545 Ohio, a big 10-person Airbnb, which is way beyond what the occupancy limits were, but it, it was in the special use permit process, which was suspended, and those people in their application said they intended to move there, but they just needed to rent it out for a while. Well, it got sold in three days by Stevens Real Estate, and now the property tax records show that the property taxes are sent to the house itself instead of a PO box. So that means to me that those people that live there now own it, it returned to owner occupied stock as, in the community. So this, if, if you quit doing these hotels in neighborhoods, you would return 100-plus right now, who knows, over five years, more to the stock of housing. Also, it's inequitable, because there are many, many houses covered by covenants, developers' covenants and HOAs. They don't pay commercial property taxes, and only the numbers work for moderate-priced houses to be Airbnbs. Big fancy houses don't work. But relying on the community to enforce violations is impractical, it's overly burdensome, and will not be effective. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Porter?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Phil Collison, and I live at 933 Pennsylvania. It's hard to find a place to look, because, I guess, I'll just read. I came here to reiterate my submitted comments, because in my experience, testimony in front of you has more impact than submitted written comments. I am opposed to short-term rentals in residential zoning districts except for owner occupied homes. The majority of short-term rentals are in the central core neighborhoods, and they remove affordable housing. They are not allowed by covenant in newer subdivisions, which is, since 1993, probably close to a quarter or a third of the city, most of them in Western Lawrence. This makes it an equity issue between Western and Eastern Lawrence. Out West, they're not allowed. The real estate professionals and developers who developed those subdivisions knew that, that short-term rentals were not good for neighbors, and so they banned them. Those same people want to put short-term rentals in the neighborhoods of modest houses and get rid of all the affordable housings. The rules that, that are being proposed tonight about a maximum of three per owner and proximity rules sounds like a really complex system that will require a lot of costly staff time, and I, I would like to have a good sense of how that system would work before we go into it. One of the comments that Mr. Jimenez made was, if you're doing, if, that, if based on a complaint, they would go in and do ADA inspection, whatever, but you're doing it in inspection every three years or every two years, so why wait for a complaint? Do your ADA inspections then. There are hotels and motels all over town, but they're also regulated based on the zoning. Airbnbs should also, similarly, be controlled by zoning. Airbnbs are not on a level playing field because those covenants don't allow them. They have their own zoning system, and they don't allow them in the newer subdivisions. So thank you for your consideration.
Mayor Nanda, thank you. Anyone else, Porter?
No, Mayor.
Okay, we'll bring it back up to the commission at this time. Okay, we will bring it back up to the commission at this time.
This is Vice Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
Go ahead, if you want, mayor. Okay.
Trying to move us forward by stating our objective this evening. So please go ahead and start the discussion.
Yeah. Vice Mayor Finkel, I, obviously, there is a debate about whether or not we should have non-owner-occupied short-term rentals in the city at all. Certainly, Mr. Buras and others tonight have have talked about the negative impacts of, you know, potential negative impacts of having short-term rentals in neighborhoods. You know, I don't know, you know, across the country, from my own personal experience, from Airbnb, Vbro and other locations, I'm not sure the data supports that Airbnbs and Vbros, you know, either destroy neighborhoods or, you know, have caused massive problems. You know, we do, we've had short-term rentals in our city for a long time, since Airbnbs came about. They've been here. They've not been regulated at all, but they've been here. We've had, you know, up to 130, 140 of them in the city. And I mean, what I've heard, you know, there are certainly some exceptions at times, but I've not, I haven't heard the data to, or the belief that, you know, that they're causing massive problems across our city such that we should just outlaw them this evening and not allow them in our city. I mean, so I know there's a debate about whether or not we should have them at all. I think we should have them. I I think they're important to a tourism city. I think they're an accepted place to stay. I mean, I know Commissioner Bulley has made, you know, some references between hotels and short-term rentals. As you talk in the industry, most people believe, or I shouldn't say that in that way. There's a good argument to be made that they are not in competition. That the people looking to, you know, that they want to stay in a short-term rental because of their family needs, because of their organization, aren't necessarily looking to stay in a hotel. Right? And when they're deciding, where should I go on vacation? Should I stay in Johnson County? Should I stay in Topeka? Should I stay in Lawrence? You know, they're not necessarily choosing their destination. And then, you know, so they're looking at their housing options. And having those housing options, I think, are important to us. So again, you guys have been debating this for a long time. I tend to support short-term rentals. So, I mean, I think what we're trying to do here in this and from our last discussion was to try to limit their impact. And then I think we can develop the data. You know, I think, you know, in and of itself, typically speaking, in a industry in which we had a lot of data, I'm not sure I'd support a 500-foot. It's kind of an arbitrary provision. But I do think by doing that, by putting in a 500-foot radius, and we can talk about that distance in a second, I do think that will allow us to control the number of rentals, see how they work, gather the data, you know, and then, you know, of course, make changes as we go along. And so, you know, 500 feet is a large distance. You know, 200 feet is the protest petition. You know, from where I live, I have one hotel within 500 feet of where I live. And I have two hotels within 750 feet of my property line. I can tell you I can't see them. I can't hear them. I know nothing about them. They are, I mean, 500 feet is a long way away. And so I do think that that gives us some protection to see how these work. I do think it's somewhat arbitrary, but I do think it's a way to, you know, start this process and start to gather the data. Again, I think that, to me, is the biggest, you know, kind of fundamental issue on the on the table. Assuming we head this route, I probably support a three-year inspection instead of a two-year inspection. I think that works for long term and I think it should be the same for short term. And otherwise, I'm supportive of of what's been put before us. And I think it's something that is a balance, you know, a balance of between not having them at all in the city or having them in a regulated manner.
Mayor, Commissioner Shipley, I have a kind of just a follow-up for Vice Mayor. Thank you for your comments. I think I saw in more than one correspondence the suggestion of not allowing it in single-family, but allowing it in multifamily. Do you have any feelings about that?
Vice Mayor Finkel, I, certainly, I think that's better than not having them at all. Again, I think many people who are looking in the short-term rental market, sometimes they're looking for apartments, multifamily apartments, that have kitchens and so forth, which a hotel does not. Certainly, that's the case. So I do, you know, that's certainly a possibility. You know, I do think, you know, houses make the difference. But yeah, that'd be one way to create the externality. Sure, to limit the externalities.
Commissioner Larson here. I'll go ahead and take a shot at this. So I still have concerns for the ordinance the way it's written. And one thing we haven't talked about tonight, but I know we've talked about in past meetings regarding inspecting even in February regarding its impact to affordable housing. We had a discussion just earlier tonight about concerns that it's not scattered enough, which I agree it's not, and we need to work on that. But I am really concerned about how this is going to impact our affordable housing stock for our community. Since it seems like many of those Airbnb, or I'm sorry, short-term rentals do kind of, have been kind of concentrating towards the east side of town. So, you know, I just don't know if we can continue to give up this housing stock, affordable housing stock. And the idea that the 500-foot radius essentially, it breaks it down to competition of first come, first served. I find that concerning. And, you know, I would have a hard time with that. I still think there's too much burden placed on the neighborhood, the 200-foot radius, those in the 200-foot radius. And not as much is placed on the applicant to obtain a license. But it takes, it seems like it's going to take quite a bit for a neighbor to actually get something denied, you know, especially before it even comes into the neighborhood. And I'm really concerned about that. So it doesn't give enough voice, I don't think, to the neighborhoods. And I I think the owner-occupied aspect of our ordinance is the right way to go. I like the owner-occupied one because I think that's comparable to our home office requirements of required to live there and have your business there. Essentially, that's what they're doing. They're living there and having their business there. But where this crosses the line for me, very stark, is the fact that this is a commercial endeavor in residential neighborhoods. And so for that reason, I can't support it the way it is. I could support definitely allowing it in commercial industrial because I think that's where these should be concentrated. And I could even, you know, potentially look at the possibility of multifamily. But right now, the way it is, allowing it, you know, in residential, I have a hard time with that given those reasons.
Commissioner Bulley, I'd like to thank the folks who spoke to us tonight. You know, it's great to get the views of an economist. And, you know, that discussion of, you know, who gains and who loses was significant for me. And, you know, from Mr. Collison, talking about where we allow these and where they'll end up is disproportionately going to be in the, you know, older neighborhoods and a lot on the east side. And, you know, for Ms. Ellen Becker, you know, she did some research and showed that these properties, if they're not going to be SDRs, they're going to be homes for somebody. So I'm very reluctant and can't support putting commercial activity, essentially hotels in residential.
Mayor, Commissioner Shipley, I just wanted to ask Commissioner Bulley of the same follow-up as Vice Mayor. And Lisa, I'm sorry, Commissioner Larson already answered her feeling. Do you have any feeling about multifamily?
I'm concerned about multifamily just as I am single-family, to be real blunt about it. I see the same analysis.
This is Mayor Nanda. I don't know that I have feelings about any of those things. I think that I don't have data, which is what I use to make decisions, particularly around the degradation of neighborhoods, et cetera, accepting one complaint. I think that I can also put myself in the shoes of someone coming to a community where, you know, I'm a single parent traveling with two children. Further I can be from other people, the more grateful they will be. And having a space in which I can cook or have a yard or possibly even bring my pets is going to be a very different experience than a hotel for me. And so, you know, I think that we perceive this as the same market, but it's actually meeting a need that hasn't been met, that we've been conforming to for a long time. Because the perception was that that was the only option available. I'm not going to go stay in someone's house where their family also is. That's not the point for me. So I think that in addition to the impact on our own community, thinking about what I would seek when seeking another community and the role that I envision having in that community. And obviously, not everyone goes to another community with the same intentions. But for me, it would be the quiet enjoyment of a space with my family, with an opportunity to be directly engaged in a community and a neighborhood. So that goes into my thinking around that. And that would be specifically to a home that is the size of a single-family home or that is a single-family home. That would be the ideal nature of that, particularly in COVID. And I think that Airbnbs are also meeting a need that hotels can't meet in the sense that, you know, it's all shared air. In a hotel, you can't even open your windows in most hotels. It's forced interaction directly with other people. So no matter how safe you're being, you're going to be putting yourself and your family at risk. And I understand there's an argument to be made that traveling right now puts yourself and your family at risk. And I will totally see that argument for sure. So I think that it's not a one-dimensional conversation. There are a lot of dimensions to this. And I think that we've been having this conversation for a long time and we still don't have a lot of data. So for me, I would tend to agree more with Vice Mayor Finkel that we have an opportunity to try this out. We have space restrictions on this. We can always rescind something. It's not, we're not carving this in stone. It's on a piece of paper and it's within our power to change it should we need to, as we had conversations earlier about the need to be nimble. But I'm not, I'm also hesitant to allow someone's concerns that don't have data backing them up to guide my policy decision-making when this is clearly something that is happening in communities across the country. And in my opinion, particularly during a pandemic, are serving some sort of need. I am open to the multifamily conversation. Thank you, Mayor. This is Commissioner Shipley. I appreciate that you're data-driven, although we make decisions not data-driven all the time. And I will say, in addition to Ms. Ellen Becker's information, which you may not necessarily believe, what we do know, and we have this, staff can verify, that one of the SCPs that was requested was actually in my neighborhood. It took an affordable unit off the market. The person bought it from a woman who was retired, moving or had passed away, I can't remember, way below market value, fixed it up and wanted an SCP for the Airbnb. The neighborhood fought it and they lost. Some of the commissions might remember. They did not get the SCP. That was an affordable unit. That, it was. It was an affordable unit and it was taken off the market and then afterwards was put back on the market. It's one thing. It's anecdotal. I appreciate that. But it was in my neighborhood and I saw it and it was real. So I don't want neighbors and neighborhoods to feel dismissed. I don't know, my computer's going to die. In their concerns, just because I don't have a number. And I would also point, sorry, everybody, to the, what we seem to have some corroboration on the lowering of Airbnb stock. What did we say? 60% to 40%, depending on who you ask. That, it may not be as scientific as I would like, but it's probably verifiable. We seem to hear it from staff and we seem to hear it from other online sources. So that is still meaningful to me. What I would like, well, one thing, first of all, I absolutely enjoy how compelling Commissioner Bulley's point about comparing Airbnbs to long-term rentals. He doesn't find that as comparable as hotels. I think that's so enjoyable. But I don't really want to waste any time on that. I hope he'll have coffee with me about that someday. What I'd really like to get to is I do feel like a few of us see a compromise in not doing it in single-family. And I would love to see us find a solution there. This is Mayor Nanda. Is there consensus among commissioners about continuing the dialogue of moving that to a limitation of single-family, I'm sorry, multifamily units? Commissioner Shipley, is that correct? Okay. Is there interest? Sorry, Commissioner Shipley, I would also qualify that. We didn't ask staff if we felt like that was possible. But I felt like I heard consensus from other commissioners as a good compromise.
Commissioner Larson here. I want to make sure I understand what the proposal is, is that we don't allow them at all in single-family or RS zoning, but allow them in commercial, industrial as well as multifamily or not?
This is Mayor Nanda. I believe it's non-owner-occupied only as well.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Shipley, that was my understanding. Vice Mayor, was that your feeling?
Vice Mayor Finkel, I, consensus and majority are two different things. I would support it pretty much as it is written, but it appears that I'm in the minority at that point. So again, consensus versus minority, I majority rules here. Again, consensus versus minority, I, majority rules here.
Commissioner Larson here, excuse me, is, I would appreciate understanding more if anybody would consider leaving out the multifamily part too.
This Commissioner Bulley, I'm, I'm okay with that, Commissioner Larson.
Mayor, I just want to double-check with staff if they have any, they see anything blaringly unacceptable about the direction we're moving right now in our discussion.
Jeff Craig, Plane Development Services Director, the one thing I would note is that you can't have detached dwellings and neighborhoods in the multifamily zoning district. A lot of our east-side neighborhoods would have multifamily zoning in that capacity. The RM zoning districts would be in neighborhoods that you would typically think were RS-zoned when they're actually not. So they're, you know, to kind of think about them in terms of a detached dwelling or a single-family house in terms of a zoning district may not adequately reflect what is actually showing on the ground today. Some of those older neighborhoods may have the RM zoning district, but be of a more of a detached, single-family design ultimately. So there's a lot of nuance between the use on the ground versus the use permitted by code that I would caution in the instance.
Commissioner Larson, thank you for that clarification. I didn't think about that. So Commissioner Larson, again, with that being said from Jeff, then I would be hesitant about including multifamilies in that designation.
Commissioner Shipley, is anyone, and of course, staff can't possibly pull this up. I just was concerned that that was too limiting. Of course, staff couldn't whip up a map right now and tell me what kind of areas that would include. I, maybe I'll just throw that to the other commissioners and, and see what their thoughts are.
Brian Jimenez, Code Enforcement Manager, I might just want to expand, since there was some silence, I'll expand on what Jeff said. Not only might we have a single detached home in an RM district, we might have a single detached home in a non-residential district in some areas that are, one area I might be thinking of, it might be like North Lawrence. There's some really crazy zoning over there. So usually that's in older neighborhoods. Obviously, the newer, newer part of town, the newer, newer construction, it's pretty straightforward. Single-family, single-family, multifamily is, is, you know, either RM twelve or RM thirty-two density-wise. But you know, in, in reference to Commissioner Shipley's question about a map, just, just think of some of the older neighborhoods, not so much west of campus, so to speak, excuse me, south of campus, around Nineteenth Street and Seventeen hundred blocks of Illinois, Indiana, but east, east, east side of town and North Lawrence are some areas where there's, there's probably going to be a lot of mixed use of type of structures in, in certain zoning districts.
This is Mayor Nanda. Can we kind of go through some scenarios based on Commissioner Shipley's proposal in, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my mind around all of this. And so I'm going to use my own property as an example because I'm on RS five with a mother-in-law house that was grandfathered in. And so historically, special use permit for Airbnb, correct? At this point, would applying to have this property as an Airbnb based on Commissioner Shipley's proposal, would I be allowed to do that? Or is that, and let's say then if it's not RS, it's RM, right? That's potential? Is what I heard? Would that change it?
Brian Jimenez, Code Enforcement Manager, if, if we're simply going down the road, and I'll defer to Jeff as well on this. If we're simply going down the road where it's, it's RS zoning doesn't permit it, that's pretty straightforward. It doesn't matter if you have an accessory structure that's grandfathered in or not. If we're not, if we're not allowing the short-term rental use within the RS zone district, that would be pretty straightforward. If, if your property was zoned multifamily and your detached accessory structure was illegal use and we, we could, you know, is your evidence supported that, then that would be allowed.
This is Commissioner Bulley. It's not clear to me whether you're talking about owner-occupied or non-owner occupied.
This is Mayor Nanda. Well, that's kind of my question, right? It's a mother-in-law house on my property that's not connected to my house that I can't rent because of zoning. But potentially, in the future, if I ever had the mind to do that, and I don't, do an Airbnb, I'm hearing that I couldn't based solely on my zoning and there's an entire empty, literal one-bedroom house that can't be used.
Good, Brian Jimenez, good Code Enforcement Manager, good question. If it was, if it was a long-term rental, yes, you could do that. But yes, if, if we're making different regulations for the short-term based on zoning district, you know, right now, long-term is allowed anywhere. So it's, obviously it's allowed in single-family all over the place. And if you have a legal structure that supports, is supported by the development code in the single-family, long-term, you could do that. But if we're, if we're going down the road, this is just my opinion, Jeff may feel differently. But if we're going down the road, if we're saying no short-term rental, which is a rental unit, short-term, less than thirty days, allowed in the single-family zoning district, I, I think you're correct, Mayor Nanda, that you could potentially have a one-bedroom unit that cannot be used in that capacity.
We're only talking now about non-owner occupied, right? We're not talking about owner occupied. We've already got rules for owner occupied.
This is Mayor Nanda. If it's, if it's not allowed in RS and this is considered non-owner occupied, that's my question. Is it owner occupied or not?
Mayor, this is Commissioner Shipley. I, I was under the same impression Commissioner Bulley was that among us, over the last few meetings, we all felt that as long as it was owner occupied, there was little, there was less to be concerned about. So if you had your mother-in-law quarters, I, I didn't, I wasn't thinking that. I was thinking strictly non-owner occupied.
Deputy City Attorney, that would be a non-owner occupied structure. It'd be a non-owner occupied dwelling unit. So that wouldn't, it would not qualify if it was a, a mother-in-law house or a accessory dwelling would be a non-owner occupied.
This is Mayor Nanda. I don't agree with that. I, I mean, I, I understand the law. I don't agree that that should apply in this instance, in my opinion.
This is Commissioner Bulley. We have written the definition of non-owner occupied, as I understand it, so we could amend that definition and take care of that. But I, you know, would ask Randy if that's correct.
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. Absolutely, you could determine that you wanted accessory dwellings to be used that way if you wanted to, so it could be changed that way.
Mayor, I have the same reaction you did, Commissioner Shipley. However, also, we haven't had the accessory dwelling unit conversation that I felt like was going to be coming towards us and planning before this COVID thing happened. And I, I don't know. Commissioner Larson, where are you at?
Commissioner Larson here, given the information that I've received from Jeff regarding multifamilies in residential areas that could be considered, that I, I would be hesitant now to accept including multifamily. I'm all for the owner occupied. Have no problem with that. And I know that's different. But I would like to limit it to commercial, industrial, those types of zoning districts and keep it out of, keep it out of the R districts.
Commissioner Shipley, just to clarify, in this magical hypothetical where someone has their grandfathered carriage house or whatever, whether they live in it or whether we make an addendum to that definition, as Commissioner Bulley suggested, you're not interested.
This is Mayor Nanda. You may be on mute, Commissioner Larson.
Yeah. Okay. So you're talking to me? Me? Yes, as far as multifamily, that's correct. Yes, including that in it. Again, it goes back to commercial designations. I'm fine with that.
Commissioner Shipley, Commissioner Bulley, I hear a little bit of a difference there between you and Commissioner Larson.
That's entirely, this Commissioner Bulley, that's entirely possible. I was kind of going back to the carriage house thing in my mind. And, you know, I, I, I just want to go back to, you know, the, the commenters that we had tonight. You know, I thought they each made good points and, and I feel like I want to be responsive to them.
This is Mayor Nanda. We've had a lot of discussion. I don't think this discussion is over. I am wondering if anyone feels like discussion continuing is going to move us anywhere? If someone would like to make a motion or if we say we are clearly not ready on this item?
Mayor, Commissioner Shipley, can I just ask Vice Mayor one last time after all of that discussion? If that moved him any direction?
Vice Mayor Finkelde, no, not, I mean, not really. I guess, I mean, we've gone, I mean, you know, obviously, but long before I was on the commission, I mean, Airbnb started in this city. We've had them. You know, the question was, should we let them continue to exist unregulated? Or should we somehow create regulation? We went to a special use permit. I assume kind of under the theory that maybe in special circumstances, in special, at, at certain locations, they'll, they're good for the community and good for the neighborhood, so we should allow them. And then we decided, well, too many people are applying and there's really too much. I mean, it's hard to go through the special use permit for, you know, a hundred and thirty properties. So now I think we get to this point of, do we eliminate them in our residential neighborhoods? Do we allow them with some regulation, which is the direction I thought we were going? You know, or do we get back to the special use permit, you know, which was tried and failed, I think. So certainly between, if our option is not allowing them in residential and you know, going this route, again, I would still support it. It looks like I'm in the minority though, so I'm, I'm not, that's the way this works, so I'm not offended by it. You don't need, you don't need to convince me to move on. I just, I mean, that's just where I am. And, and so, you know, I, you know, I, I do think there'll be some, some people who've run a short, you know, run a short-term rental in a location for the last three years who will wake up in the morning and read the paper and find out that this, the commission is looking towards, you know, making the, the short-term rental that's been there for three years and had no complaints illegal. I think we're going to hear about that when this comes, comes back to us again, and that's fine, but you know, I just think that's something that, you know, we're going to hear about. This is Commissioner Bulley. I, I appreciate those points, Brad, and, and I'll just respectfully disagree that, you know, we have never made these legal. I mean, we've made the non-owner occupied legal. We've issued special use permits to a few, but we have had a moratorium. We have not had legal use under our code. So I, I, I think that that is something that we have to keep in mind. We have not approved this use yet.
Vice Mayor Finkelde, fair point. Very, very fair point.
This is Mayor Nanda. I think that I gave a very narrow exception and clearly it was highly, highly specific to my own situation. Fortunately, not commercially applicable because I'm really not interested. However, I do think that there are people in situations like this for whom, you know, we're kind of the inspiration for beginning this conversation in some ways for single parents with, you know, needing or aging parents needing to have a way to supplement their income. And you know, I think that there are several properties in which there are mother-in-law houses on that property. Mine is, mine is grandfathered in, so it's not just a given for me. But for that to not be an option, to, that's, that's different from having a renter there twenty-four seven, which can have a huge impact, particularly if you have children, et cetera, et cetera. But if, if someone does have the option of having some weekends when they would be able to make a little cash, to offer that space very curated, then I'm, I'm really loath to say you can't do that or to say, you know, how dare you run a hotel when it's clearly not what's happening.
This is Commissioner Bulley. I, I think that that's more a question of the definition of owner occupied and non-owner occupied. I mean, if you're in the house and you're doing an STR in the, in the detached unit, maybe it is a owner occupied. I don't, but I mean, I, I think that's more where that is rather than allowing by right all through the neighborhoods.
Commissioner Larson, I would also just give the comparison that if we were to allow it to be in residential neighborhoods, non-owner occupied units, then I would equate that to allow, that we should allow a small home business to operate in a neighborhood where the business owner doesn't have to live there or the tenant. Because it is a commercial endeavor, essentially.
This is Mayor Nanda. I can run a business out of that non-owner occupied or out of that dwelling unit right now. I could do that more easily than I could do an Airbnb.
Commissioner Larson, I couldn't do it out of my house. It would be illegal.
This is Commissioner Bulley. Another point is that, you know, we've had Airbnbs, SDRs in our community for, for a number of years. We've also been talking about affordable housing for the entire time I've been on the commission, five-plus years.
Okay, Commissioner Shipley. But I think I want to check with Randy. Could we, I, I'm hoping I'm getting where Commissioner Bulley is. Have non-owner occupied only in the three zoning districts that you named, that I believe Commissioner Larson agrees on, and add the accessory dwelling units in owner occupied? Can we do that?
Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. I suppose. I mean, I do know that under the city code, outside of the definition of owner occupied, that an accessory dwelling is a, is a separate dwelling unit. So we'd have to say, tie it away from being a dwelling unit as owner occupied or non-owner occupied. Perhaps it would be the lot or the premises or something of that nature, but I suppose that it could be crafted that way somehow. And otherwise, yes, you can make a distinction between residential and non-residential.
This is Vice Mayor Finkelde. I mean, in, in the direction we're heading, I mean, not allowing RM, so that would mean whatever the apartment complex, an apartment complex with a hundred units could not have a, a short-term rental in it. Right? Because that's in RM, that's in a commercial district. If it's an RM district, it couldn't have one. That's, I mean, you, that's the direction you head. it couldn't have one. That's, I mean, you, that's the direction you head.
This Commissioner Bowley. Would it be possible for that property yard to request a rezoning to commercial from RM? To be able to accommodate that use?
Jeff Craig, Planning Development Services Director. Reszoning applications are possible. There does have to meet the golden criteria and some factors that are outlined for state law. It may not be probable in all situations. The other side of that coin though is if it zones to commercial for a short-term rental use, it does expand the opportunity for other commercial uses to come into the property. So, uh, to, to pick on one district, say it zones to C in one which is a commercial neighborhood, that may introduce convenience stores and other uses that may be permitted by code that I don't have in party at the moment. But that would expand the use potential in a different way.
Vice Mayor Finkel, I, I mean, going back to one of the distinctions before, what? You know, I'm in the minority, so I'm just trying here. Would you, what about allowing it in all M districts, but not in detached dwellings? Jeff, does that, is that something, Randy, any thoughts on that?
Jeff Craig, Planning Development Services Director. That would become very complicated for staff to figure out based on both the zoning districts and the building typologies at play there. That could be very, uh, complicated and time-consuming to maybe work out in some instances, but it, it could be a potential if, if so I ordered.
Brian Heeman is Code Enforcement Officer. I'd also like to add that accessory dwelling in it could be legal, but one of the units has to be owner occupied to begin with. So if you're using that, that angle, we're really saying that, that detached dwelling unit that, uh, Mayor Nonda is talking about, i- it is owner occupied, at least one of the, one of the units. It doesn't have to be the principal unit. It can be the one in the front or the back. It doesn't matter. So in one regard, we're saying multifamily is okay, the apartment complex with 100 units, but the uh, Mayor Nonda's property that is owner occupied, that has to be, one of the units has to be owner occupied in our zoning district to be legal, is not. That might be counterproductive in some regards.
Commissioner Shipley, I'm sorry, Brian, in what way? Um, I, I, uh, uh, maybe other commissioners disagree, but my feeling is, you know, let's assume that Mayor Nonda is now an 80-year-old woman and she needs that extra income. All of that is that she can keep her home. But, uh, an apartment complex with 100 people in it, that's not going to serve that same purpose. It doesn't serve enough. It may in some other ways, depending on its price point, serve an affordable housing purpose, but it's not gonna keep the owner in their home. Maybe that's not quite right either.
Brian Heeman is Code Enforcement Manager. I might not have been very clear in my statement. My, my, I was trying to convey that it would make, I think, it since there's an accessory dwelling on the RS zoning district, one of the units has to be owner occupied. That to me, in that situation, maybe we do go the route of working with changing the, the definition like, um, Randy said about a lot being owner occupied or something. Cause to me, that doesn't sound like, um, this is my personal opinion, because I don't, I think that should be allowed, in my opinion, where one of the units is owner occupied, but you know, that's, that's something for you to decide. Because there is the element of Commissioner Nonda being on the property every single day. It's just not the unit in the backyard that she should as a responsible mayor of Lawrence. She would keep an eye on him, um, as it, as should anyone else. So, but I also see Commissioner Finkel's point of you have a big apartment complex and we're telling them that they can't have one Airbnb when I think vacancy rates, um, especially in today's world are, are nowhere going to be near capacity. So, I mean, that, that's our, that's our dilemma we've talked about for over a year now.
I'm gonna make a joke, Commissioner Shipley, but then I'm gonna ask Commissioner Bowley one more time. Um, so if there's an apartment complex with units open and they can use them for Airbnb, maybe they should be encouraged to accept vouchers for affordable housing. Uh, but my question for Commissioner Bowley is, okay, does what, um, Brian say work for you?
This is Commissioner Bowley. Uh, I, I guess we're putting, changing the definition of owner occupied and non-owner occupied into the same mix with what we're doing tonight. I'd prefer to separate those questions. Because we haven't really thought about this, you know, and had the benefit of all, I mean, we haven't had the consideration of all the preparation on this specific item coming into this meeting. So my inclination would be to say, we're talking about two things. One is the non-owner occupied with regard to where we want to do that in the city. And the other one is, how can we strengthen the, the definitions of owner occupied, non-owner occupied? So I see these as two questions and I think trying to put them together into one thing really is, is, you know, more than perhaps I can do tonight.
This is Mayor Nonda. That's kind of how I'm, I'm feeling pretty overwhelmed by this conversation and certainly the ability to come to any sort of conclusion feels pretty off the table at the moment unless someone just makes a motion and we vote or don't. But I'm wondering, and, and I know this is painful to even suggest, if based on the number of kind of concerns that have been raised tonight, if this can be brought back to us to talk about specifically, the restrictions regarding zoning. And I, I know that they are two separate issues, but they are intricately entwined for my vote on this issue. And I think for continuing dialogue on this issue. And so I, again, acknowledging how painful it is to suggest tabling this until they're able to bring back something that would address those specific issues. I mean, I don't think that there's consensus for even three of us on any of these. I also don't just want to say, well then, didn't pass, we're done.
This is Commissioner Larson. I think what we're looking for is a majority. Is that correct, Mayor? Not a consensus?
Well, yeah, yeah, um, yeah. And I think through our dialogue, I don't even hear a majority.
Okay. Commissioner Larson, I kind of thought I did, but so let me, I was thinking that we had support for, uh, removing the, the RM designations from that category as well as residential's and allowing it in, in all the other uses. Is there, is there a majority of, of commissioners that would accept that?
I, I could support that.
Commissioner Shipley, and I think where I agree with the mayor is that would depend on the strengthening of our definition of, of owner occupied. I don't feel comfortable trading that without, um, uh, an affirmative on that.
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. I just want to point out a possible unintended consequence. If we allow, for example, a, uh, let's talk about accessory dwelling and, and a primary dwelling. If you count the primary dwelling as the dwelling unit and apply it across the lot, there's no way you're not going to be able to keep that out of apartment complexes or other places that have multiple dwellings on it because that would all qualify. Say one apartment's occupied by the owner, they could have, uh, Airbnbs or other short-term rentals within the district. So it's going to open it up a little bit more than what may, maybe expecting it to.
This is Commissioner Bowley. That's one of the reasons that I'm really reluctant to try to do that part of it tonight. Because we haven't, um, you know, tasked staff with that specific thing. But I, I'm willing to support the, um, suggestion from Commissioner Larson that we remove the RS and RM and go ahead and pass this with that change.
This is Mayor Nonda. I would, um, I, I would invite anyone who wishes to make a motion to do so, and we can take a vote.
Well, this is Commissioner Larson, and I'm not sure how to say this, but I, I move that we adopt ordinance number 9737 and ordinance number 97 zero first reading with the acceptance of removing RS and the RM designation from the, um, from the ordinance.
Mr. Bowley, second.
This is Mayor Nonda. We have a motion from Commissioner Larson, a second from Commissioner Bowley. Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Bowley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkel, aye?
Nay.
Commissioner Shipley?
Nay.
Mayor Nonda, nay. That does not pass three to two. So we can either crack on or we can, um, consider having those issues addressed by staff and bring it back.
Commissioner Larson, I would definitely want us to continue to work on this because I would like to see some level of, um, short-term rentals being allowed in our community. So I would encourage staff to work on that. If other commissioners are interested.
Mayor, this is Commissioner Shipley. I, I agree with Commissioner Larson. Uh, my only concern, Mayor, is that we have not been clear enough with staff about what we're driving at. Or if we have been, that I hope staff will be clear with us what's not possible.
This is Mayor Nonda. Yeah, I think that the issue is what, what is zoning based distinction the way to go? Is there an opportunity or a space in which we can redefine either through the zoning, addressing it through zoning or addressing it through non-owner occupied definition? To allow the intent around that. Um, I don't know that there's necessarily disagreement among, or agreement among commissioners regarding that issue or regarding, um, whether or not it's in, um, apartment complex units. But I think that if we requested one that would allow, one that would not, um, for us to have dialogue around, that may be useful. Am I missing other dialogue that we've had that may be useful for direction for staff?
This is Commissioner Bowley. Um, in my preparation for this meeting, I went back and watched and, and read. And I think that staff did a remarkably good job of bringing to us what we talked about in February. I, I think we got to look in the mirror on this rather than necessarily at staff. So, uh, that said, you know, I hope that, you know, we can continue to work on this issue and resolve it at some point. Thank you.
Mayor Nonda, Vice Mayor Finkel, aye? You, you have anything to add to this soup?
Yeah, well, I, Vice Mayor Finkel, I, I, I would echo what Commissioner Bowley just said. I think the staff did a good job bringing us what we wanted. So Brian and Randy and others, the fact that we're not passing it doesn't mean you didn't bring us what we asked you to bring us. So don't, don't take, don't take it the wrong way there. I guess I'm, again, I'm, as the minority guy, I can just here throw grenades in and, and, and make you guys work, but I mean, if we're, if we're, if we're going to allow owner occupied and we're going to allow non-owner occupied only in commercial and industrial districts, you want all this stuff about 200-foot radiuses and, and all that stuff? You don't need any of that, right? That, that was all protections for RS zoning, correct?
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. Yeah, this would make, this would make it a little easier. A little, uh, shorter.
This is Commissioner Bowley. I'd just like to remind Vice Mayor Finkel that he was on the majority side of that last vote.
Touche, Vice Mayor Finkel, aye says.
Commissioner Shipley, I just one last thing I want to bring up, maybe, uh, more for certain commissioners. I appreciate Brian bringing up the messiness of North Lawrence and, and I think a lot of us know what, uh, some people in North Lawrence feel about Airbnb, so just don't, um, forget, I guess, don't let that get lost. What you throwing that's real in there?
This is Mayor Nonda. Um, does staff feel like, and I, 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 I think that we do need to hold the mirror up to ourselves. Commissioner Bowley, that was a very fine point. But does staff feel like, um, they can bring us what we asked for again? Go from there?
Jeff Craig, Planning Development Services Director. I believe we've got, uh, pretty solid direction from the discussion this evening. We will try to get that back to you in some due course here with, with that information.
Mayor Nonda, thank you. Um, Sherry, do we require anything further on this item before we move on?
Uh, Sherry Redeman, City Clerk. Mayor, the act, the motion, um, to approve the ordinances um, was defeated. Obviously, you could defer the item, but it's not essential.
Okay, let's just move on.
Mayor, Commissioner Shipley, I, uh, I love staff desperately, but this is something I want to remind us to do from now on is to give ourselves a time limit because a lot of people have been waiting on this for a long time.
This is Mayor Nonda. Staff, do you have any thoughts on when we might be able to turn this around?
Jeff Craig, Planning Development Services Director. I, at this time, I don't have to take a look to see what the work would entail to get it back to you, so I, I don't have that at the moment.
This is Mayor Nonda. Commissioner Shipley, would it be sufficient to have that in our future agenda items in, um, in Craig's City Managers Report in our next meeting?
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, let's move on to commission items. Any future agenda items to add? Any future work session items to add?
Commissioner Larson, I did, I did, um, want to discuss, I don't know if it'd be a work session or, or what, or just a request from staff. Is, um, at the beginning of the year, maybe it was even last fall, there was a discussion that planning would bring back to us a list of priorities. Um, their long list of items that they're working on, including neighborhood plans and, and so forth. And they were going to give us a list of those and, discuss with us the priority, priorities as to what gets done first or second, third, 10th, whatever. So I don't know if that's still something this commission wants because I think it was what was discussed last fall. Uh, whether or not that, and I know the pandemic has slowed everything down and I, uh, I appreciate that, but I did want to kind of bring it back up and to see if there's any interest in receiving that so we can get an idea of when some of these, uh, plans are going to be potentially worked up.
This is Mayor Nonda. Is anybody interested in having that brought back? Saying some nods.
Commissioner Shipley, I, I, maybe I feel like actually Commissioner Larson's brought this up before, so, um, yeah, I agree.
This is Commissioner Bowley. Um, we have, I believe deferred the conversation about 23rd Street between Iowa and Massachusetts. I'm very curious how that's going to be coming in on our priorities. Cause I'm really concerned about that territory, that, that part of our city.
Mayor Nonda, it sounds we got, like we have consensus around that issue. Um, is that something that staff could bring back to us?
City Manager Craig Owens, uh, of course, uh, we'll work with Jeff and see what, um, what we can do, when we can bring that back to, to the commission just to, um, just to see how, how we prioritize them. Uh, I would say within the next 30 days, we'll bring it back on an agenda under the City Managers Report. We can have that discussion.
You.
Mayor Nonda, any other items or?
Vice Mayor Finkel, do we have the other items or we still have work session?
We're on the other items, but if you have a work session item to add, please. We're on the other items, but if you have a work session item to add, please.
Other items. Vice Mayor Finkeldein, um, real quick, well, one question, two comments, but question. Can Jeff, can you tell me why did we defer the temporary shelter from the agenda at the last minute?
Jeff Craig, Planning and Development Services Director. Certainly there was a technical error in the ordinance that we wanted to correct for because it did not reflect what the planning commission and we'd intended to do. So to get that item in line, we deferred it so we could get the error corrected and back to you quickly.
Vice Mayor Finkeldein, crack the in arrow. Sounds like a good reason to defer. Thank you. Um, just real quick, it's late, but one I want to just say for the record, um, and, and thank the county commission for what they did on the CARES Act. I mean, the way they, what they had to go through to try to spend 24 million, and I know a lot of our staff members, Diane included, did a lot of work on that. I know Casey did a whole lot of work on that and I'm sure, um, Jeremy and others did a whole lot of work on that. Um, so, I mean, obviously the county commission and the, and the county staff did yeoman's work, but I know the city staff did a lot for that. And I'm very excited to see what some of that money can do for the city, but thank you not only to the county, but for our staff um, as well. And again, just to note, um, it was a tough week for the, the Lawrence business community. We lost George Kretos, founder of Mad Greek and Dale Willey, um, from Dale Willey Automotive to about, you know, to long time, um, stalwarts in the business community in, in two different ways. So, uh, um, just, uh, thank them for all they did for our community.
Mayor Nanda, thank you, Brad. Commissioner Shipley, do you have something?
Yeah, I, I don't know. Maybe no one else noticed that this was the anniversary of women's suffrage in the United States, right? So it's, it's, it's worth throwing those things out. Um, and then I do have one item, um, that maybe Craig will refer to, but I'll ask him now and he, if he answers it. I, I get a lot of questions about what's going to happen when students get here and I'm reading all the emails that I think something that, um, most people want to know is if we see a party getting out of hand, who do we call? All right. You and I talked about it earlier, so I'm sure you'll have something for me. Thanks, Mayor.
This is Mayor Nanda. Um, Commissioner Shipley, did you want, did you want some information from staff on who they should call if they see a party on Tennessee Street?
Yeah, I think that's what people want to know. Uh, Mayor, Commissioner Shipley, um, and I'm sure you'll appreciate this, uh, at a time when we've uh, set on a few occasions that we would like to call officers out less often is also a moment where people want someone to show up when they see that. So I just wanted to, I absolutely have, uh, confidence that uh, staff is, knows the answer to this. I just wanted to know for my own edification because I do get asked all the time.
Yeah, this is City Manager Craig Owens. Um, we have had some discussions about that. You know, public health orders are something that we would be a, a civil, um, response that we would have. We would respond if there was a, if there's a call for, let's say, a party, um, that we would have, um, we would respond the way we normally would. And there may be other violations that would be at play there. Um, but as far as enforcing a public health or, uh, order, um, those would be things where we would take a complaint and get it to the district attorney and then that would be a civil matter that they would undertake. Uh, also the sheriff's department could, could, um, also be involved, but, uh, for the most part, that's how we would handle those kinds of events if I'm understanding the, the general description. Um, and you know, there, there are times when large congregant events, um, violate other ordinances and we would be accustomed to, uh, to being part of those, but that's how we deal with the public health related matter.
Mayor, this is Commissioner Shipley. I just want to be very specific that we are still expected, if we see something like that, to call dispatch or the non emergency network.
Yeah, I mean, yes. Um, we're, what we're really relying on is that the community education and, um, the return of the students and their interactions through the university or universities, they, they would, um, you know, be responsible and not congregate and not violate, um, the health orders or the guidance that we have to try and do that. As far as, uh, trying to get people out to make a lot of calls or notify us of, of congregant events, it's not something we're asking for, but we, it, when it occurs, that would be the appropriate way for them to report that.
This is Mayor Nanda. Thank you. Anything else? Craig, take it away.
City Manager Craig Owens, uh, there are four reports before you. I won't go through all of them, but note, um, that there is a population estimate, um, that was done every other year and, um, it, it kind of shows different trajectories and, and our estimations. Those are key for us to understand how we should be, um, planning, uh, for different things in our community and how we should be, uh, what we should be planning for and expecting, but that is something that was regularly updated and uh, happy to answer any questions on that one. Also, um, the Planning and Development Services 2019 Annual Report. Uh, a lot has happened in that, in that year, um, but, um, that is a report that I found interesting and useful for them and we can answer any questions on that. And then the final item is, uh, the, uh, agenda work session, uh, items. If there's any feedback we get on those, I, I understand we'll be talking about that more soon, but there's plenty of items, uh, coming up. The, and, uh, I think we added to them tonight.
Mayor Nanda, are there any questions for, for City Manager? Are there any members of the public who would like to give public comment on this item, Porter?
No, Mayor.
Mayor Nanda, thank you. Um, okay. Anything else on the City Manager's Report? Thank you. We ready to move on to the calendar? Any items on the calendar? All right. We are ready for executive session. Does someone want to make the motion? Commissioner Bulley?
This is Commissioner Bulley. I move that we approve the motion to recess into executive session for approximately 15 minutes to discuss privileged legal communication in the city's attorneys regarding a pending legal matter pursuant to KSA 75 dash 4319B2. The justification for the executive session is to keep attorney-client privileged matters confidential at this time. The city commission meeting will resume in its virtual format in accordance with resolution number 7333 at the conclusion of the second session.
Vice Mayor Finkeldein, second.
Mayor Nanda, we have a motion from Commissioner Bulley, a second from Vice Mayor Finkeldein. Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldein?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, aye, passes unanimously. We will be returned to this meeting room in 15 minutes. Mayor Annanda, aye, passes unanimously. We will be returned to this meeting room in 15 minutes.